Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our Thursday, February 18th, 2021 workshop. Before we begin the work of the district, let us all stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have one public input card. Vance, would you like to come up? Mr. Yocum, and you will have, if you'll give us your name, address, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Vance Yocum, with FiscalRangers.com, the blog. I'm at 12619 Milwaukee, Taveras, Florida. I just want to talk about item number 3.02, which talks about the IT plan. First of all, I'd like to say kudos to Mr. Weeks for putting that online so that I could get a chance to look at all 400 pages of that PowerPoint. I think he had an army that helped put that together for him, and it was very instructive. But one of the things that I'd like to see is maybe a specific discussion on performance dashboards, and that would be performance, especially for things you have. The system, I know Mr. Weeks was already involved in that, and I made video on it, of the software that you're using for the academic side. But I'd like to, I would have liked to have seen a section here on administrative benchmarks and administrative dashboard to show that. There are county, there are school districts in the country that do have dashboards. There are dashboard software companies that have examples of dashboards that they have created to track management, and that could be facilities, that could be your individual units, which would be your schools, it would be other types of things, like the cost for recruiting and other things that are normal to look at and to have benchmarks for in the business world. And that's kind of my mantra this year, is to start pushing performance metrics, not only for school districts, but the cities. Poor city of Taveras gets that just every meeting, because I show up with stuff there. And the county board just had their planning meeting. I don't know if anybody from the school board went to the planning meeting, but the county had-
Chair Owens was there.
Pardon?
Chair Owens was there.
Oh, okay. But they had all the city managers there, and they came up with a lot of things on their wish lists. But what I like to point out is there are things like key performance indicators, KPIs, which the federal government uses, and a lot of companies and other business government organizations use. And then I'm going to real throwback days. J. Peter Grace was the chairman of the President's Private Sector Survey on Cost Control. That was probably back in the 70s or 80s, when I was still around, and this book is on War on Waste, and this is on government programs and monitoring and reducing waste. I look at it as, I don't think there's too much waste, is that you maybe don't have people that are always schooled in management analysis and performance analysis, things again that are common in the business world. And so that's my preaching, is that I would like to see if there isn't a discussion of it here, because I didn't see it in the PowerPoint, that maybe you have a separate meeting and you start coming up with a plan for having a performance benchmarks on a management dashboard.
Thank you. Thank you, Vance. Vance, maybe you and Dwayne could get together and speak about it one-on-one. That'd be amazing.
Okay. I'll bring my-
Okay, thank you. Okay, do we have any Zoom public input? Okay, so we'll move right into our topics. 3.01, mid-year data review and DA schools update. Dr. Felton?
All right, well, I'm actually gonna kick this off this morning. We've looked forward to be able to bring this to you. As we know, this year's been a little different in terms of our data collection and our performance indicators, but of course, this amazing team has put some things in place and been able to track to the greatest degree possible the performance of our students, regardless of what learning platform they're on. And so I'm looking forward to them sharing that information with you, talking a little bit about some of the challenges that we faced in this area and some of our plans moving forward. So today's really about where we've been, where we are, and where we're going. And to start us off, I have about a five-minute video that is a summary of not only this year, but really the past four years since my time here. So I wanted to use this as kind of that stop to reflect, and really, the video is my reflection and my message to you and to this community about the great work that I believe has happened and the things that we still have left to accomplish. So we're ready for the video, and-
When I was appointed superintendent in January of 2017, I never would have imagined that we would be leading through some of the most challenging times in education. In my first year, Hurricane Irma closed our schools for several days, causing damage and widespread power outages. This was followed by the tragic loss of students and staff at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School in February of 2018 that led to sweeping changes in school safety and security. And now, a worldwide pandemic like nothing we have ever seen in our lifetimes that has put education in the middle of an ongoing national debate and health crisis. In spite of the challenges, as I reflect on the past four years, I am in awe of all that we have accomplished together. Guided by a shared vision for teaching and learning, student achievement has improved, graduation rates have increased, and passing rates on advanced placement and industry certification exams continue to climb. Together, we've become a one-to-one Chromebook district, giving teachers and students an additional tool to enhance teaching and learning, a tool vital to our ability to reopen schools in August of 2020, and offer both traditional and virtual learning options for students and parents. Although the district ranked 60th in the state in per pupil funding, this past year, our fund balance improved from 3% to 5.5%, and the once-depleted insurance fund has been restored to the state-required 60-day reserve. We've increased efficiencies, improved communications, and reduced costs through a district-level reorganization that has resulted in a more cohesive system of support for schools and our stakeholders. One of the things that I believe has contributed to our success thus far has been our work to establish a common vision for teaching and learning through the use of our instructional framework. The framework led to the revision of our teacher evaluation tool that went from over 20 performance indicators to just six, and in its simplest form defines our expectation that students read, write, think, and talk every lesson every day. Some of our most critical work has been to address the growing achievement gaps, gaps that have been exacerbated by COVID-19, driven by the formula that time that is varied plus quality instruction that is targeted equals learning that is constant. We required all schools to implement a remediation and acceleration block during the instructional day to give students additional time to learn required content. Their mediation block, along with before, after-school, and Saturday tutoring, offered both face-to-face and virtually, are just some of the ways that we are working to close these gaps. To guide our intervention work, we've utilized local and state progress monitoring tools that help teachers to adjust their instruction as needed to meet the needs of students. Weekly Common Planning, along with focused professional development, has promoted greater teacher collaboration while providing a system of support for one another. The development and use of common assessments and the sharing of best practices has become a catalyst for our goal to become a nationally-recognized professional learning community, or PLC district. School and district teams have committed to not only closing the achievement gaps, but also the growing equity gaps. School equity teams meet to review data by race, ethnicity, gender, economic status, and disabilities to address glaring disparities of students who enroll and find success in advanced placement courses, as well as disparities in suspension and attendance rates. School and district teams are working together to find ways to close these equity gaps until student success is no longer defined by any of these subgroups. In addition to our work to meet the academic needs of our students, we have remained committed to building a team of mental health professionals at every school, who along with community partners are working to bring high-quality, evidence-based support and services to all our students. Thanks to the Lake County voters, the additional .75 millage has allowed us to place a school nurse, a mental health liaison or counselor, and a PAST teacher, which stands for Positive Alternative to School Suspension at every school. In addition, we've been able to hire more guidance counselors, social workers, psychologists, as well as place one or more school resource officers and/or school safety officers on every school campus. Together, we've accomplished many great things, but there is still work to be done. So what lies ahead? Our district's first K-8 school will open in August with more new schools to follow, bringing new programs and exciting opportunities while helping us to keep up with our county's growth. We will continue to refine and implement our common vision for instruction, ensuring that students have the skills to learn and collaborate at high levels. We will continue to expand our intervention and equity work, work that will be more critical than ever as students who have not participated in traditional learning return to our schools in hopefully the very near future. We will increase access and use of progress monitoring tools to better evaluate student progress and guide our instruction. We will establish more alternative school options to better meet the needs of our most vulnerable students. We will work with local and state partners to establish innovative early learning programs, including a summer kindergarten transition program. We will continue to expand and improve CTE programs, as well as more advanced placement and course options, including ACE and IB programs. We will improve communications and our customer service with new programs such as Let's Talk. We will continue to work with local leaders to make workforce housing a reality for our employees. And we will continue the work necessary to improve our financial position while increasing employee compensation, working with our local legislative delegation to obtain funding equity and greater funding flexibility. According to Simple Truth author Mac Anderson, "Success doesn't happen by accident. It starts with an unwavering commitment to build a dedicated team who serves their boss, the customer." And as I said, while there is still work to be done, the amazingly courageous and devoted team of educators here in Lake will continue the work necessary to ensure that every child is equipped with the academic, social, and workforce readiness skills they need to graduate and successfully enter college, the military, and/or the workforce. I am proud and honored to serve as superintendent of Lake County Schools, and I want to thank our school board, every Lake County school employee, parents, students, and our community and business partners for your commitment and unwavering support. The difference between failure and success is a great team. In Lake County, we are blessed to have such a great team.
I too am very proud of that, because I think it really does capture so many incredible things that we've done together. And so now, we're gonna turn it over to Dr. Felton. She's going to lead you through the data review, and then she has some members of her team who will be chiming in if you have questions. And then we'll have Ms. Pearson will give an update on the mid-year progress of our two DA schools, and we'll end today with Mr. Weeks, who will be doing a mid-year update on our technology plan. So I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Felton.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So while I'm sharing my screen and making sure you can see everything, I just want to say that while, can you see that?
Yes.
Yes. So while I am the voice of the presentation today, I do want to thank my team and all the teams that helped support this work, getting this together for you today. So as the superintendent said, we do have a great team, and I certainly had a great team helping me put this together. So I want to thank Katie Pearson and Amy Cockroft and their departments who helped put this together, Melissa Desjarrelle, Frances Sallis, who helped me with some graduation acceleration data, and Rob Felton, Renee Dudley, Stephanie Majewski, who all helped with putting together the other pieces of data, as well as Dwayne and Ashley Rosa, who certainly stepped in and stepped up. So thank you to all of you, and thank you, board, for the time this morning and to kind of look at sort of where we are, and kind of where we've been and where we are, and then kind of where we're headed. And so please go ahead. I hope that you have the presentation in front of you. I sent it, and I sent it electronically as well, so you should be able to access it. I do have time at the end for questions, but if you certainly have questions along the way, please feel free to stop me. And if there's anything that we don't have for you today, I'd be happy to gather it for you, any other requests. So without further ado, let's see if I can get a 10 minutes. So I want to remind you of our vision. We certainly have a vision that is lofty and says that we will graduate every student with the skills necessary to succeed in the workplace and education. So I think that we are well on our way to doing that, and that's what drives our work. I also want to remind you of our equity commitment, that we committed to eliminating disparities and ensuring that success is not predictable by any of the subgroup categories. And so I'm really excited about that piece of our work that's coming up. I mean, that we're working on that for three years, and I think you'll see some of those results today. So I want to remind you of sort of where we've been so far. So just kind of a review, understanding that we haven't, we don't have necessarily a state grade for last year. I want to kind of give you a sampling of where we have been. So you'll notice that we have seen some improvements as we work up this B rating. Just a reminder that to get an A rating, we need to be at 62% and 677 points. So we've got about 30 points left to kind of make, and so I really, really know that our data would have been significant last year. We were such on a roll and really charged up, and so we'll see it again, bring that back. But I do, I will always believe that last year, we would have had, we would have had some, some big improvements coming. I do think you'll see that, and some of the data that I show you that represents last year, it's also indicated that we would have seen some growth in all areas. This year, you know, it's a challenge, and so you'll see that as well. So as we look at data today, just now that we are, we know it, we see it, and we're working on it, but we will, we will look at all the data that we have. We're gonna start with graduation rate. I know that we reviewed this a little bit before, but I do want to kind of make sure that we review it again, and just it does complete our data picture. So we're just gonna revisit it for a minute. Don't you love this slide?
Yes.
Beautiful slide, right? This is like my favorite slide of the whole presentation. This is my favorite. I love it for two reasons. One, it's because we set a goal of 90%, and we reached it. So in three years, we reached one of our three goals that was, that was measurable, and so I'm very proud of that fact. And when you look at where we started, it wasn't like we had just a 2% gain to get there. We certainly came from 77.8, and we put in a system in place. And that's also why I'm really proud of it, is that it really is a system that makes this work. When we think about graduation, there's just so much that goes into it, and I'll talk about that in a minute, but it's every, everybody has a hand in helping make graduation rate move, and so I'm really proud of that piece. I'm also proud of this one. One of my goals that we, that I probably haven't put out in public is to be, to have something in the top third, and we are now in the top third of the state in graduation. And while we can say that there was some waivers, remember that the whole state had the same waivers we did, and we still moved up to 20 seconds. So I think this is really indicative of where we, where we, how we were headed before the, before we had the shutdown in March. So I'm pretty proud of that, too. I think we all are. And when we look at graduation rate, I did provide you some information by different subgroups, by categories. So you'll see ESE here, ELL, and Frameworkers Lunch, noticing that blues means that there was an improvement, gray is means there's no change, and then yellow indicates a decline. Also note that any asterisk means that there were 10 kids or less, so for privacy reasons, they don't, they don't put those numbers, they don't report those. So just an opportunity to look at those by category, and then here are the graduation rates by subgroup, as well as male and female. So just a reminder of why graduation matters. We talked about this a little bit last year at this time, and we've updated it a little bit. We noticed that, you know, in 1973, they said that 28% of jobs would require a post-secondary education, and by 2027, 70% will require that. And what we have found that in 2018, 70% actually were in such jobs. And so we know that that's, it's a true indicator of how successful our graduates will be in the work, in the workforce. We also know that the opposite of that is true, that when children don't make it through high school, they're 63 times more likely to be incarcerated. That's an astonishing statistic. And they're also three times more, we have the opportunity to be unemployed. So it's just, it's just, it's super, super important that we get kids through our system, and we get them through successfully. So just sort of what we've done, obviously, we set a vision, right? So somebody has to start, so our leadership from the top, our superintendent said, what, 90%? And then we all work towards that vision. And when you think about who all is involved in this, I think we use the word "systems" lightly, but I think I want to spend some time here. I want you to know that it's, it truly is a system that works together. One of the reorganization pieces that happened three years ago, that the superintendent talked about, was that we did reorganize. We reorganized so that people didn't work in silos, and that we had a more collaborative structure, and this is a very, very good indication that our collaborative structure's working. So it starts with a goal. It comes down to somebody working on a plan to implement that. We have College of Career Readiness Department who focuses on, it's one of the pieces that they focus on. Also, our regional teams help support. The principals to be able to work on it. Our instructional technology division works with the data clerks to make sure our data is inputted right. I mean, it really does take everybody. We think about the intervention pieces that have to play into it, so kids can get caught up if they're behind. Principals then work with their graduation facilitators to be able to make sure we're going kid by kid and course by course. And we really, really do have a, almost a fine-tuned machine working on graduation right now. It's one of our best systems in place, so I didn't want to leave this part of our presentation without highlighting that. So I am really, 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 it's really evident of how our district is working smarter to be able to help students ensure that they learn. So I'm gonna move into acceleration. While we don't have final numbers, we do have a pretty good forecast. One of the things that the College of Career Readiness Department and Frances Sallis leads that is, that they're really good at, is they have been almost on the money every time they predicted a certain percentage. Like, they come within like half a percentage every time they predict where we're at. So I feel pretty good about these numbers, and we do have some state data that supports, that they use to be able to make these numbers. So I thought it maybe was sharing. So I'll start with industry certifications. So for last year, this was the industry certifications that were earned. They, we did experience a slight decline due to the COVID shutdown at the end of the school year. Our teachers prepare for exams throughout the year, and they have multiple opportunities to test. But some people were waiting for that third window to test. They felt like their kids would be more ready if they, with some of their students, if they waited till that third window. And as you know, that window did not happen. And so we had, we did have some students who weren't able to test. And so while it doesn't mean that they didn't pass the certification, it means they didn't, we didn't even get the opportunity. And so that was unfortunate and played a part in probably some of these numbers. I also want you to realize that that has lots of implications, right? One, kids don't get industry certifications earned, but it also has a monetary implication. We probably lost almost half a million dollars in CTE funding due to the shutdown. And so that's just, we're not worried about it. We can, we're not, it's not, I mean, of course, you're worried about losing half a million dollars, but we, we've worked on how to compensate for that. But I just wanted you to sort of see that there is, there's all kinds of implications to the shutdown that we had last year, which we're well aware of, but it does play a part in all areas.
May I ask a question about the industry certifications and exams?
Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you. Do we, do we charge any of the students to take the industry certifications, or does the school cover that typically through CTE funding?
School covers that.
Okay. All right.
Dr. Felton, do the students who have, who, like, for example, many of our high schools looks like they were waiting, you know, almost, they dropped by almost half, right? Do those students have like a chance this year to make up the test? Like, will they?
Yeah, like, they, they can sit for the test this year as well. Like, it's not just, if you're done, you're done. So they have the opportunity to sit for this year as well. So we may see a difference in numbers.
Okay.
So if you look at advanced placement tests, college board did provide the opportunity for students to test from home during the shutdown. Some students took advantage of that, others may not have. The test was abbreviated and allowed for, it did allow for an increased pass rate for some students. I just want to remind you that when we think about that, like, why didn't everybody take it at home? Well, we, if you remember right, last year when we started the shutdown, we deployed one device per family. I think it's important that you know that. And then we sort of went and backfilled people who had multiple students or multiple levels. But when we think about right now, where everybody has a device, when we started this last spring, we did not have that many devices at first to be able to deploy. So when I think about what could have hindered students from not taking it home, there's all kinds of things, right? Like, there's internet access right away. There's just the idea that I'm just not gonna, I'm just, I'm overwhelmed with the pandemic, so I don't, I'm not gonna do it. I don't have a place to sit for four hours quietly to be able to take an assessment. So I think you'll see some of that as true, and as we know, some of our most marginalized students probably had the most challenges in order to be able to think about, like, do I have a device? Can I get on there? Like, how do I navigate all those pieces? While some of that seems to be sort of status quo right now, a year ago, remember, that was a huge challenge when we moved everybody onto a device. So I think that might have played into it.
Related to AP and data, asking for things, I was wondering if maybe perhaps we might also, at some point, be able to look at how the percentage of passing scores compare. Certainly, we see increases in most places of students passing the test, but I know with the increased access to the classes, I know a lot more students are taking the exam. So I was just wondering how the passing scores compare.
Sure, you wanna know by course?
I don't know. Well, I mean, yeah, I've seen some people nod, so yeah, I guess people would be interested in seeing that.
I think that'd be really interesting. And I want to add on just my thought here, too. When I look at the numbers, I was looking at advanced placement tests passed, and then also the industry certification earned. And like, when you look at advanced placement tests passed, I'm just like quick doing math in my head, but you see like Eastridge has like 800 AP passes that are tested versus like Umatilla's 59. And I know that population difference is also significant in those schools, but then when you look at the industry certification, it's not that big. It's not a 700-student disparity. It's more of a 200-student disparity on the industry certification. So I wonder, I just wonder if we could have, is it that we have more industry certification availability at some of our smaller high schools, or is it that we, I don't, that we don't have as many AP classes that are offered? Like, the percentages are different in those two areas, and I, it'd be interesting to hear why that would be the case.
Uh-huh.
That's a good question.
Dr. Felton, I have a question. If we could go back to industry certifications, normally, the industry certification exams reflect in the school score the following year. We mentioned students who did not sit for the test at the end of this past year may perhaps sit or take it at some time in the future. When would those scores be given to the schools, and what school year would they count?
So my understanding is they would count in the year that they take the test. So for example, if they take the test this year in 21, in 2020, 21, they would count on next year's school grade.
Okay.
So the scores that you see here on 2020 would be in this year's school grade, if they gave us one.
Okay, great. And the money would be the same? The funding that is associated with passing of the test would be associated-
Right. We receive money for a student, for every test that has passed.
Okay.
But only one, right?
Excuse me?
Just one of them, right? Or do we, do we actually receive money for every test, or is it just one test per kid? I thought it was one AP test or one certified.
So we're talking money or school points? And so for school grade points, you get one point for an acceleration point per student on industry certification test? You receive money per test that has passed?
Oh, I didn't recognize that.
Related to the, to the passing percentages, I'm also interested in comparing that against ACE. You know, I know that, I've heard of a lot of success over Leesburg High School with their ACE program, and I'm interested to see if, if ACE is leading us down a path of greater success for our students, because that leads 200% bright futures, whereas AP doesn't. You know, is there an advantage to pursuing an alternative, you know, across the county and not the AP? Because I know we've been working for a long time on our passing percentages, and I'm not sure if we've seen the fruits of our labor yet compared to the other-
Is the ACE cohort taking tests yet? Because I know they had two years before they were taking tests.
Umatilla's not. This is their first year.
I don't know where Leesburg is. I mean, I know it's up and running. I mean, I know it's up and running.
Yeah, I may have to phone a friend. I'm thinking, I'm trying to figure out, I think that they would be taking it this year, if I'm not right. And I know Ms. Sallis is in the room.
This is the second year.
She may be a better. I can't quite see.
She's here.
She's coming.
Hi, so yes, ACE did test last year, it was their first tested year at Leesburg. So they did test, I don't have the pass rate on the top of my head, I have the FDE on top of my head because we just did all the calculations, but their pass rate was between sixty and seventy-something percent. For all, overall, all of the tests that they took last year.
In their first year.
In their first year, correct. Which is about right for Cambridge exam.
Good.
So I'm writing some of that stuff, some of those pieces down to be able to send you after, if that's okay.
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
For dual enrollment, we have seen a decline in dual enrollment. So this data reflects actually current data. So while the last two that I just showed you reflected last year's pass rates, this actually shows you enrollment for this year. So you'll notice that last year, you'll see what the students were enrolled, this is just students enrolled in dual enrollment and then how many students are enrolled in dual enrollment this year. Of course, we're looking at this to see all the different ways that kids can, are able to receive like an acceleration piece and it takes them to be able to have access to college level classes. You know, while we don't know exactly why they're down, we think that they're down because most of them are offered virtually. And so we think that kids prefer a face-to-face college experience when they do this. And so we don't have as many students taking advantage of that is our prediction because most of the Lake Sumter State College courses are virtual at this time. So we're wondering if that might have been an indicator of this. I'm not sure. But I want to give you those numbers as well. So if you look at our acceleration rate overall, so this is what, this is our forecast, so it's got a two thousand twenty projection. So you'll notice that we are seeing a pretty good increase in most places. And for the district, we should see about a six percent increase in acceleration rate. For high school only, of course. We don't have middle school. Middle school acceleration rate can't be figured without, without the algebra score. So we're going to have to wait for that after this year. So we'll kind of, we'll have to wait on its middle school acceleration. So this is high school acceleration rate only. But this is one of those, remember I told you that I know that we were on a really nice trajectory last year? Based on graduation and acceleration, these are two big indicators that we were on a nice trajectory for last year. We would have been a four point four in graduation and six points in acceleration, which is a ten, ten-point increase, ten point four increase for our overall district grade. And so it's a nice little boost to when you think about sort of what we had going on last year.
Can you, can you explain what, what is, how is this done? How is acceleration rate calculated? Is it the number of kids taking a class or is it the kids that pass the class?
Do you want to know acceleration?
This, this acceleration rate that we're looking at that's going up, what, what is it?
So they take the four-year cohort when they come in as a freshman and they have all four years to earn an acceleration point while they're in high school. So the top number is, the numerator is the number that includes the students who passed an industry certification, an advanced placement test, a Cambridge exam, or a dual, who earned dual enrollment credit. And then the denominator is all the students in the cohort.
Okay. Nice.
And it lags by a year.
Thank you.
So we're going to move into this year, so think present day, that's where we're going to kind of head right now. I thought we'd start with enrollment attendance, just to give you kind of an overview about where we are. And so, and just realize that enrollment and attendance changes daily. So some of these data polls were at different points, so I'll kind of try to point you to those as we go through it. This is two different views of our instructional delivery models that students are currently engaged in. You'll see that we have about, they were polled January twenty-eighth. So it did, it was about eight days into second semester when this data was, was pulled. So it goes from September to January, just this year. We started with about sixty percent in January being in traditional, twelve percent in like virtual and twenty-eight percent in like live. And then it has increased to about seventy-four percent in traditional, about eighteen percent in like live and eight percent in virtual. So I think that this is a great indication that we're doing well with being open and students feel relatively like they can come back to school traditionally. And so I thought this was an interesting piece to show you before we start. So this kind of tells you what the models are and who's taking advantage of which. So you may have seen some, some interesting information come out recently about locating every student, how we found every student. So I want to, I had, this is another one of those teamwork approaches that I'm really super proud of. It's like, I'd almost wish you'd come see the work of it sometimes because it's amazing. Truly, truly, Lake County is amazing. And I've worked with a lot of districts and it's, it's just phenomenal, the way people dig in and the way we just work together and just, we just get it done. I mean, something needs to be done, we get it done. So I have a little story about this. So you'll notice that this is sort of where we were last year in January, we were this year in January, and then making sure that we've located every student. There's a lot of publicity about where are all of these students and they're not being found. I'm telling you, we found every student we could find. And it's really, really interesting how it all came about. I'll tell you, we sort of, early on, got some wind that we had some students when they first started, they first started talking about this. They're about thirty-one hundred students that were not yet enrolled in our schools that we had tracked down. We went back to school of enrollment in last March and looked at to see where were they last year? And then we started digging. And we started digging because once Dwayne Weeks noticed there were thirty-one hundred, and I went to Scott and said, how much money is that? It's twenty-one million dollars? You start digging, like, you start finding, start finding your people, right? And so, and, and so we really did. We put together teams, we made new teams, we made a find students team. We had principals, we had spreadsheets going all over the place. The regional executive director said a whole different job, like, they pulled together assistant principals. They found, we started calling kids, it was almost like a telethon. We started calling kids, saying, what, are you enrolled? A lot of kids were thinking they were enrolled in maybe like virtual but weren't or were thinking they were trying to get enrolled in Florida virtual, which we talked to them about our option. You know, everything we could find, they thought they were enrolled somewhere, but they weren't. And so we, we found them. And so we ended up, this is sort of the fruits of our labors. I think if you would look around the district to see how other people compare, we look pretty dang good. So we actually ended up, we have about a hundred and seventy-two kids that were somewhere last year in our system that we have not located. And so it could be a multitude of things. They could have moved, but, but we really think that we've done due diligence with this. And so I'm very proud of the efforts that everybody put together to make this happen. And so when you think about, we have people in some kind of option. Any questions about that piece?
You covered that one pretty good.
Okay, good. This sort of talks about absences. I think, you know, we can't, we can't, kids can't learn if they're not there. And so this was a good indication, we started digging like what's happening with attendance. And so when you look at our district total, we have about twenty-two percent of our students this year versus eighteen percent last year who do have an absence rate of more than ten percent. So it would be like, we've been in school around a hundred days, a hundred and something, so it's about ten days that they've been absent. And so you'll notice those numbers, you know, are a little bit higher than last year and that is a concern. I know that, I do know that I hear all the time about schools, they are calling people, they are trying to get people to come to school. I think a lot of this has to do, I predict that some of it has to do with the idea that we do have multiple families living together, we have people living with grandparents. And when, when schools have a case and they do have a call-out, some kids decide not to come just because there's a case anywhere at the campus. And so I think that plays a part of this, maybe.
Emily, wouldn't it also be like, I know we've even, my own household erred on the side of caution. Like, if somebody's not feeling well, we don't go to school. Like, and I think we talked about, like, attendance adventures not being so heavily pushed and those types of things to encourage people to not send their kids to school if they were feeling even a little bit sick this year. So I feel like, I, it's almost expected.
Yeah, and I do think that we've, I think that we've also sort of, you know, we've been pretty strict about the fever rule, right? Like, you, you got to stay home. If you go home with a fever, we don't expect you back until it's gone without medication. So, you know, the old days of, you got to be, in my house, it was you got to be burning up or throwing up or you're also going to school. That's not the rule right now, right? I mean, right now, it's if you feel bad at all, we don't want you, you're right. I mean, we, we put that out pretty clearly, didn't we? And so I think, I think you'll see it, you know? And although we try to, we do try to encourage people to come to school, we do want you to come to school healthy.
Do these include quarantine absences?
They do not. So a quarantine absence is coded differently and it's, they're present. So they're, they are counted as presence. And this is, this is kids who are not in quarantine just for other reasons. If you look at, I thought you might be interested to know what that would look like by model. So of course, it looks a little different, so you'll, and this is absolutely probably accurate. Thinking about twenty-one point five percent of traditional students and then seventeen point five percent of like live students have absences. So we still see students, even though they are at home, maybe not logging in, are not logging in for the whole day. And so those are considered absences. These figures were pulled just the other day, so there's a little bit of difference, just so you know that they were pulled February seventeenth. So let's move into some data. So let's look at our mid-year data. We have a lot of moving parts when it comes to data, so I'll do my best to kind of explain sort of where we were and when we took the test. But we do, sort of, we're trying to gather all, I'm sorry. Okay, we're trying to gather all the pieces we can and put them together to sort of complete a picture to see maybe where we can provide support. We have plenty of time to certainly intervene and provide supports and that certainly is what every school, every district personnel is trying to support schools to do. But it does, we do need to take a sort of a look to see where we are to make sure that we are providing supports in the right places. So we'll start with iReady. We pulled standard view of iReady. And basically what this means is kids are, they're, they score proficient if they are within the grade band currently. So this is where they are currently. So for example, middle of the year, the second and fourth column sort of gives you a comparison of where they are this year to where they are, were last year. But it basically says that seventy-two percent of the students in kindergarten are scoring in, somewhere in the kindergarten grade level band and they are on grade level. So, and you can sort of look at that all the way down. We have noticed that students' data in reading has minimally decreased from the previous years. Teachers continue to teach on grade level material during the core and then step in during intervention to be able to support. And we, we all were very grateful that the district has, and the board made iReady instructional component available to support instruction so that students can work through their individual learning plans. And then each student has a Chromebook now to be able to do that on.
And has iReady done any wacky renorming from last year to this year? Or can we truly compare last year's data to this year's data?
We met with them yesterday and we really can compare last year's to this year's.
I know that they like to renorm suddenly and then you can't compare anything.
They have done that work, that, they have, I think they did not feel that was necessary this year. You will see that.
Oh, I was just asking, like, we should be looking at BOI twenty-twenty-one versus BOI twenty-nineteen, right?
You could, this is beginning of the year, this is how they entered. In September, they took it and this is, this is how they entered last year. And then this is how they entered, this is how they, in the middle of the year. And then this is middle of the year.
Oh, so I was looking, I was looking at it backwards, right? But we do need to compare beginning to middle, or beginnings and beginnings to middles and middles, right? Because like, we don't expect them to know everything at the beginning, right? I just want to be clear.
Right, yeah, and we, and they would score beginning of kindergarten, right? So like forty-one percent came in scoring beginning of kindergarten, nineteen percent came in scoring beginning of ninth, of first grade, you know? And now in the middle of the year, they're scoring forty-two. We want to see growth, but we just, we, I think it's good to compare to last year. We just kind of want to know how they're coming in with less, you know, because of the fact that we shut down from March on. And so what does that look like? And, you know, how did our online learnings support us last year? I mean, we know there's gaps, so we're trying to sort of look at to see how, how far were they behind coming in? What we've noticed overall is that they come in more behind in math and we're struggling more in math support, you know, in, in math than we are in reading, so.
Interesting.
But Emily, Emily, can you speak to, so if a kindergarten at, at the middle of the year was at sixty-seven percent, then we can indicate that twenty-twenty-one, they'd be a first grader. And there's a pretty substantial drop as that student moves into the first grade or the beginning of the year.
And COVID aside, the same was true the previous year, your observation.
Yeah, it is, and well, it's, obviously, there's different, so this is, this is first year standards and this, this means that in the middle of the year, the kindergartners were well, they were mastering kindergarten material.
But then when they moved into the first grade, they're only at nineteen percent.
Right, nineteen percent scored that they were, yeah, so it is interesting to see, right? That's, that the kids are coming in.
But is it, Emily, is it, is it mastery of first grade skills? We wouldn't expect them to have mastered first grade skills. What is, what is that nineteen percent from the, what is the nineteen percent at the beginning of the year mean? They, nineteen percent of them have mastered first grade skills?
That they're in the grade band at that point.
That they're in the first grade.
In the first grade grade, they're falling in the grade band currently.
No, they're scoring below level, below first.
No, 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 I know, but nineteen percent of them are scoring on first grade level and the rest of them are not even in a first grade grade band.
Right.
Right.
That's, that's.
Right?
That seems pretty.
I don't know, so I taught kindergarten, right? And so I, I know these kids as they leave and I, I just, I can't, are we, are we not doing enough to, to ready them for first grade? I mean, is kindergarten not going deeper enough or far enough for them to walk into first grade and be at the beginning of first grade?
Or does first grade have a giant jump or is this the summer slide?
Yeah, what is it testing to? So it's not, is it, they're scoring, that's where, I think we have this conversation a lot, right? So the test items that they're answering are those just the ones? Like, would they have not been taught that material yet? And so they're not scoring at first grade? Or is it testing the kindergarten standards that would have, you know, do you know what I'm saying?
But the only thing is, this is mid-year data, so you would think that they would have improved and be ready to go into the first grade, right? I mean, each one drops down, so.
But it's not end of year, it's just mid-year.
This is mid-year, so you would think they would be better even going into the twenty-twenty-one.
Would you, though, on their next grade level?
Yes, so, so at mid-year, if seventy-two percent of your kindergartners are in the gray band.
Kindergarten.
Right, mid-year, okay. But then, six months later, when they go into first grade, why are they suddenly below the gray band for the beginning of first grade? Like, that gray band moves, right? It moves for the beginning of the year, end of, middle of the year, end of the year. And so they're, they're saying, iReady's saying that they're not at the beginning of first grade, that there's still kindergarten knowledge. Like, like, mid-year kindergarten? I don't even know.
That's what, that, I guess that's what I'm wondering and, and it's funny, go ahead, is that Dr. Burns talking or Emily?
No, no, so let me give you a little bit of an indication.
Okay.
In kindergarten, they get support with reading the text. And in first grade, when they come in, they read it themselves.
Oh, that's huge.
Part of why you see a large drop in first grade.
But Dr. Feltonner, I'm equally concerned with kids moving from third to fourth grade.
So they score sixty-six percent.
Pretty important.
And they, they get, yeah, it is interesting to see the level. And so I don't know if Amy can speak specifically to the test. I, I cannot speak specifically to the test. I also want to show you something with, I want you to think about, so twenty-twenty-one, just while we get up the grade bands, I need to show you another slide. This twenty-twenty-one is a little bit inflated here in K-two. It'd be easier to look at last year and if you're speaking to last year, then it might be easier to look at. Let me show you why, I want to show you why.
I almost went to this slide in my conversation, my, I'm just going to tell you, like, look at the lake live.
Yeah, so let me tell you sort of what happens with our, with our lake live model. I'm, you can probably kind of predict sort of maybe why K-two is a little bit higher in our lake live model and our like virtual model.
Are you asking for us to predict?
I assume you mean parents.
That's it. I wasn't sure if we were supposed to answer yet.
So we are working with teachers who teach virtually and like live students to communicate with parents in order to help them understand the importance of allowing students to complete the test on their own. We've actually had some kids who have scored so high that then when they're in the instructional piece, they can't do the work because they've had so much support on the assessment that it places them at such a high level. But then when they work daily, we've had to actually open up the test and like retest, ask for, some parents have called and said, okay, would you, would you let me retest my, can we retest my kids so that they can work? some parents have called and said, okay, would you, would you let me retest my, can we retest my kids so that they can work at their grade level? So we've had some of that happen as well. So we do see sort of an inflation this year in K2 especially. It's actually happening nationwide. It's not, as curriculum associates, so they've done a study throughout all the schools that use iReady. And we do see that trend all the way up. When great, when students reach grade three to five, the data remains relatively consistent towards whatever model that they're in.
Is there, um, is there any way to create or to access, like, if I wanted to see what the end of your kindergarten test versus the beginning of your first grade test looked like, without it counting towards district data? Like, is there some sort of dummy account that we can use to look at those tests? Or do we have access to what the questions, well, it's adaptive too, right? Or, so I guess it's kind of hard to know, but like, I'd really like to just see the difference in material.
I will tell you guys, that's where I struggle, the whole adaptive feature and like making sense of this on grade level versus not on grade level. And I, I mean, I can tell you guys, Jace took his iReady middle of the year for second grade at home and he had in second grade fractions on line plots. And I was like, oh. He was like, Mom, what is this? I'm like, yeah, I can't, and it's very difficult to not go, well, let me, what, do you know what a line plot is? You know, let's walk through this. But, so it was beyond his scope. He did, they do do line plots in second grade, but they don't do line plots with fractions and reading those story problems. And so obviously that was adaptive. So because he was able to answer some higher questions, he'd be on the grade band. But what if kids are just, that's where those grade bands are designed? Is that, that's more indicative of that. Would the, would the years, and I don't know if they've normed, so I didn't even know if I was going to ask this question, but we're just looking from 1920 to, 1920 to 2021, which is obviously an anomaly year. So is this typical in regards to like what we're seeing from the middle of the year to the beginning of the year? Typical outside of pandemic?
Well, we do see, like, we do see about a 30%, they do, yesterday we met with them. They do say that we have some of the highest learning gains around. And so I think we do grow kids quite a bit. So you can see sort of the growth between the 19 and 20, you know, how kids do grow. Almost 30% in, in the lower grades and then about 20, 20-ish and, or 10, 12, between 12% and 20 in the upper grades. Amy's in the room, I think. So I don't know if you have some, if she can answer or add on to that thinking.
Well, and this is just one data point too.
Yes, and I think it's important to look at BOY to BOY, not assuming that a kindergartner who leaves on kindergarten level is going to test into that first grade band with that. Because they could be early kindergarten, still in kindergarten, but then not meet the early first grade requirements. So when we're comparing those, we really want to look at the BOY to BOY and MOY to MOY.
But not after, okay, so forget about kindergarten to first grade, but move on down, I think it is relevant.
They still could, so let's look at fourth grade, for example. We had 48% of our students are in that fourth grade band. That could be early fourth grade. But then when they test into fifth grade, they still, they might be in a later fourth grade band. They're not in that fifth grade band yet. Because there's early, there's mid, and there's on grade level. So if they're early in a grade level, meeting it at middle of the year, they're still considered in that grade level band. But they're not necessarily making it to that next grade level band when they take the test the next year. They could be still in the later fourth grade, so they're not hitting that early fifth grade band.
So what we really need to see is if, what percentage we have at end of year. Is that right?
Well, not even. So, so I think what you're saying is that, so at the end of the year, there are kids who have just, just snuck into the gray band. They're at the very bottom of that gray band. And so they're considered at grade level for end of the year. But then that gray band has moved up a little bit for now, for the beginning of the next grade level. And because you were down here at the very bottom of your band, you have not made that much of a jump to start the new year in that new gray band.
Yes.
Hot dog.
That's where our Lake County teachers come into play.
Exactly.
They teach them and help them reach a higher level within the band.
And we monitor those bands as they progress as well with iReady.
And I want to add, Ms. Cunningham, I think just really hit, hit my question. So I have heard from teachers that say that they get this report back that says that a student isn't on grade level. And they're like, you can just take, I have to let you know this and you can just throw it away, like the student is on grade level. So do we, and have those, are those part of our data questions? Even the kids that maybe aren't on grade level that are showing on grade level, which I don't think is as frequent as the opposite. So that a teacher seeing in class that a student is proficient, but then they're coming back with their data from iReady that says that they're, you know, pre or emergent or early versus later, are we monitoring that?
Well, I think with any data, we, it's one data point. We want to look at the full picture. And then our teachers have the opportunities, they have the, they have training around their data with these prerequisite reports that talk about what skills might be missing that drop them into a different band. And then they can pull a small group or work with a student individually, or they would be able to do that on their path in the program.
So I know we've, we've correlated the, what, I don't, the word is failing me, but that we, we found that iReady is pretty indicative of FSA. Like, those are correlated, they were, and then I know that it skewed out. But that was something that they just, they, that we had been told and seen that it was pretty comparable. But I just wonder also if we're, are we seeing that still? And are we having that discussion as, at a local, like a school-based, team-based level versus just at a district level?
Well, we were the last time we took FSA, but then we, yes.
But even with this data now, like, what are your, what are your FSA, or what are your, or what are your iReady data say? What are your grades saying? I had a principal come in, and this was years ago, and it was a grade level meeting. And I, and so I heard this conversation happening at one building, but it was the only building that I heard it. And he said, you know, what's going on? And they're like, you know, our kids are struggling, they're not doing well. And he put up their percentage of, on A or AB honor roll, and it was like 95% of the kids. He was like, if your students are struggling, then why are 95% of them in all A or AB honor roll? What, there's something that's missing here. So we're still having those conversations.
Absolutely. Yes, we are.
So if there's so many caveats and exceptions, what am I supposed to garner from this?
Right.
That right now, the percentage is of students that are in that grade band and our teachers have data on their, on that day. In this, yes.
That's right.
We have to have some diagnostic tool though.
Right.
And then we, teachers have individual student data reports where they are getting information on their students. Another data point for them, along with their classroom observations and the lessons that they do in class.
But it's a huge conversation when they can say that, like, why, if, if I've only got 48% of my kids on grade level, but I've got 85, 90% of them making all As, is it my instruction? Is it the assessment? Is it my classroom assessment? So that's when the conversation can really kick, kick in hard.
And, and does it, and then where do you see?
Right.
The fruit of that work?
Right.
For our instructional staff, really working with individual students and.
No, 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 but if you're presenting data to us, at some point, you've gone through and made all of those kind of corrections? Is there something that represents that? That it is like 44, it's actually in third grade at mid-year? Or 33, is it really 50%? Or what's the real number?
At the end of the year? Because this is formative, remember, we saw time to act on this.
But, no, that's correct. I get that. But then I'm talking, but then what I'm hearing is, maybe I'm wrong, is that there are other things, other factors that this may or may not be a legitimate number. It may be a number on this, but not where the student really is.
I think what the numbers says, what these numbers say is that kids are within their grade level. And I think one of the things that I look for nationally is that they keep saying we are two grades, kids are coming in two grade levels behind and they're coming in with two-year deficits or a year deficit. So I'm watching the middle of the year this year compared to the middle of the year last year, especially in third, fourth, and fifth. Because if we are asked to take an assessment at the end of the year, which right now we are being held accountable for that assessment, I want to know sort of where, where are we at? For me, district-wide, I think schools use this data very differently. They look at it kid by kid, they look at it by teacher by teacher, by school by school. But when we present it as a date, as a big picture, I'm looking at how much are we sliding? Like, we look at 60% of third graders are in the school, in the third grade band and 66 were in the grade band last year. It gives me hope that we're kind of in the same ballpark in 45 and 48, and then fifth grade seems to be right on target with, with where we were last year. Not that we don't want to go above that, because we do. But this year, we're just trying not to see humongous gaps in learning. I would then know that in third grade especially, that I, that's probably the one that I need to like go look at by school and think about, are there different places that I need to target in terms of third grade students? But I'm looking more, Mr. Mathias, like, what is the big picture in terms of how much of a slide are we seeing? So for me, that's one of the pieces that I'm looking at when I look at this data. There's a lot of nuances in iReady, we all know that. But it is fairly accurate data when it comes to, to doing some predicting for FSA for third, fourth, and fifth. We don't do a third assessment for third, fourth, and fifth, which sometimes I wish we did. So we'll, and we do it for third grade in terms of for, as a caveat, as a option for if they don't pass FSA. But in terms of, I would love to have it K5 in the third test, but then we're sort of, it's that conversation about how much are we overtesting? Like, do we actually need it? They already taken into the year assessment. So you have to balance that. But we only get this middle of the year picture. And you got to remember, it's middle of the year. And they took it in December or January.
But you're not concerned at all that the third graders at the middle of the year were at 66%? And then those students entering the fourth grade came in at 32%? That's not a concern to you?
It does concern me a bit, and I'll tell you why. Because if you look at our, our third grade assessment scores, I don't have the exact number, I'm going to guess it's probably in the 50s. It would tell me that many of these third graders probably are, are, when they end the year, are more in like a mid-year third grade status and they haven't reached proficiency at all the standards we need them to reach proficiency at. So yes, I would like to see the fourth grade, when they enter fourth grade, I'd like for kids to be more ready for fourth grade than probably have them. So it is a concern of mine.
Okay.
It's one of the reasons why we're, we are expanding our summer programs, which I'll talk about at the end, just to maybe help with that. But yes, I see, I see your point.
That's all it was.
You know, I have to wonder, I have to wonder if iReady's got their beginning of the year bands in the wrong place. And, and, you know, because, I mean, you look at this and go, oh my goodness, panic mode, right? But I think the last time we took the FSA, our fifth graders in ELA were almost in the upper quartile of the state, ranking 18th out of 67 districts. But you look at this and say, oh no, only 32% are on grade level to start the year, panic. I, I just wonder if their bands are in the wrong place.
Yeah, I was wondering if we, if it was, if iReady was able to look at proficiency for the following grade? Like, if we could set that, whatever that gray band is, at, at a higher proficiency level so that we could maybe look at a different, like, like you would have this slide and then another slide that might show us at, at this first grade proficiency, they would be proficient to begin second grade, if that makes sense? Like, maybe it's just part of the first grade gray band. Maybe we have to set it at a higher percent so that then those kids we would see would be proficient in first grade. And then we could get an actual like apples-to-apples comparison.
Well, I think first and foremost, you have to realize and take into consideration and understand that when children finish whatever grade it is, say, second grade, how they spend their summers, the activities they engage in, what they're exposed to is going to be very different. So if you have a child who's, you can have two children exactly the same level, but if there's one child spends his summer playing video games and doesn't read books and doesn't get those kind of extracurricular activities that is going to enhance the summer, they're going to lose ground simply because they haven't had the exposure. So those same two children who were scoring the same at the end of the year could possibly come into the next year with a big difference in their achievement. So there's just a lot of moving parts that you have to consider. I don't think that you can expect or find a standardized test that's going to be able to take all those things into consideration. I think that's where the principals and the teachers and the curriculum specialists and all those people at the individual school levels, they drill down on individual students. When they have data meetings and they talk about children, they know what Billy Bob was doing at the end of the year. They know what Billy Bob is doing at the beginning of the year. And they can work on a plan for him. So I think that's the thing we have to consider. The charts that we're looking at include all the third graders in Lake County that took the test. That's a large group with a lot of variables. And, and, you know, children are people and variables matter. So I think we have to, we have to remember that first and foremost.
I think that speaks to your point, Mr. Mathias, is that those are the conversations, like the big picture is, is happening at schools. The reason that this data becomes so imperative is because it is correlated with the FSA scores. So what this shows, it has been shown statistically to correlate with what the FSA is going to show. That's why it seems so heavy, that, that the conversations at the school level are, okay, let's really talk about these kids. And what are these kids? I don't know that you capture that at the district level. I don't, you know what I mean?
I think it would be a very different conversation if you had a group of principals in here asking them to talk about the third graders in their schools.
Yeah. And their iReady scores.
Yeah. So I, I don't think we need to get worried that we're not meeting the needs of our students. I think we are. We just wouldn't necessarily see it in a whole district chart because it has to be drilled down more. That's my two cents for what it's worth.
And that was amazing. That was almost a nickel.
So if you like reading, we have some for math as well. Again, that was, I showed you that slide and how it was broken down. And then here's, here's math. So our math scores look a little different. You'll notice we look at third, fourth, and K2, you still see that same. What did you say? I didn't catch it.
You're going to give Mr. Mathias a heart attack.
I know, I know. I see that. And I do, I think, I see, I do think some of these, I mean, I, so I will go back and I think about, all right, so why were kids so much lower in math than they were in reading? And for, so I think about as an adult, as a parent, as a teacher, as a student. I mean, it's not like we spend all summer saying, hey, do some math problems. I might as a parent say, hey, let's read, you know? If I don't, I don't have to do anything else, I might say read, but it would be difficult for me. And I think about, all of these students had to switch to an online platform last spring. It's not, it was nine weeks of work. I mean, it's basically March to May. And there's a lot of skills in math that could be learned between March and May. Whereas reading, some of the skills are recursive. You know, we do some of the same skills, they repeat themselves over and over. Where math is some, there's a lot of new content that comes up. And so these do, when I look at the beginning of the year, 2020, 21, I, it, it does give me a little bit of pause to say, it feels like we had some slide, you know, are we showing kids moving up? We are. Does these look the same as reading? They, they do not. We are seeing, we have a lot of things happening in play, you know, when it comes to what people are working on. And so I think we, we looked at this and said, we have, we have a little bit of a math slide. And so we are definitely, we know that teachers are grouping students to get some of those missing prerequisite skills for on-grade level. We know that we work directly with teachers. There's training happening through iReady and our curriculum specialist to look at the reports, to see what do they mean? What can I do? How do I identify needs? How do I individualize instruction for kids? CRTs are pulling data to create tutoring, tutoring groups. We are using these for tutoring. So we do, we, we see this and are certainly intervening.
Emily, can I just ask one clarifying question? And this, we just talked about this, I just want to make sure I understand. So when you look at that kindergarten 29% beginning of the year, they're not, I'm really struggling with, are they saying that 29% of the students are on grade level at kindergarten in the first week of September, when we have taught them for maybe two weeks?
I think it means that they are, they're doing, they're in, they're in the kindergarten grade level band. They're not coming in as a four, they're not one year behind. They're within the realm of a kindergarten learner.
Are they testing kindergarten standards for Florida?
Yeah, yes.
So there's an expectation that they would have mastered kindergarten standards, the beginning of kindergarten.
There's some. What kids should know in September in kindergarten, that's what they are, that's what they're pretty much looking at. Some of those kids probably did really well.
Who decides that?
Well, it goes back to your VPK standard. Remember, all of them get tests.
It's going to be shades.
Kindergarten readiness.
Yeah, so you know.
That is so basic. I still want to look at these tests.
I do too.
I, I really want to, do we have a way to go in and look at them without messing up data and creating like fake children? I mean, do.
I could take the test and I would not, I would not skew it, I think.
Like, I, I would, I would honestly like to, like to go in and look at. Although, although in reality though, I guess comparing us back to the FSA, we would expect to see these scores in math be lower than reading because ELA for us in the elementary world is a stronger suit.
Better.
I mean, we are practically in the upper quartile for fifth grade, upper third for fourth grade. But in math, third, fourth, and fifth grade, they're all about the middle of the state. You know, we're ranking in the mid-30s in terms of county rank versus 18th for fifth grade ELA. So I guess this goes back to the interesting perspective you just shared about, okay, over summer, you got all these. you just shared about, okay, over summer, you got all these, you know, libraries doing reading programs and things of the sort and kids are, you know, they think that's fun, right? But how do you make math fun over the summer? You know, nobody, I'm not, I'm not saying you can't, there's certainly you can, but nobody's doing it, right?
Not nobody. I mean, don't use that expletive.
We're gonna send forty-two thousand kids to your house for the summer. So.
So I think about, so we are looking at this summer, we do wanna put in some kind of like, kind of both a reading and a math um kind of opportunity for kids if they wanna take advantage of it in different places in the region. So thinking about how can we enrich our summer opportunities? So we are doing some planning around um what summer opportunities might look like and how kids possibly could come in and maybe make math fun, um, which it can be very fun. Just how, how can we help some of these students to, to maybe look at the, at the gaps that we're seeing. So I, I think we did, you know, we, when um the superintendent talked about the learning formula, one of the, one of the very, one of the things we have to various times, some kids need some time. And so we're, we need to figure out how do we build in some time for that.
Maybe it would help too, Emily, if we, I know we're looking at proficiency. So maybe we could even have like other range, like this is the, the group that are in the grade band. I don't know. Mrs. Cunningham was laughing.
I'm fascinated by how much iReady makes me all night.
I know, I think, so.
We need like an iReady workshop or something because you're so fascinated by how this, how iReady, like everything.
We, uh, we, we don't love it.
The problem is, it's the best thing there is.
It is, it is the most closely correlated.
We have to have something, you know, and so it is, it's decent, and it does have some instructional pieces that go with it.
Yes.
And while we may not love it, teachers do find it beneficial and, and for many students. And so while we don't want an overuse of it, we do want it to be an option for kids to be able to use it to be able to intervene. And, and remember, we look at the data to, to decide what do we do before we look at end of the year data.
Right.
Do our students have access to?
Comment that, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. Our students that are home during the summer, do they have access, I'm looking at Mr. Weeks, do they have eyes, access to iReady? Okay.
I think, what was his answer? I'm hoping it was yes.
It was.
Cause I do think we, we purchased it last year and we did leave it on so the kids could access it all summer.
So I, I wonder how much of this too, as we look over time and, and we push out the idea of, okay, you have not mastered the standard, hey, take the time to redo it until you gain mastery and instead of just moving on, right? You know, instead of the teacher just recording the forty-five in the grade book and moving on, now, now suddenly the next math skill that you're learning, well, you can't do it because you, you haven't mastered the previous one. Uh, I wonder how much of that kind of culture will, will shape our math scores over time?
I certainly think, looking at those essential standards and making sure we define some that all students certainly need to master is some, some of the work that's happening in a few of the schools. I will say that our grading work is slower um this year because of um our situation with COVID. I don't think people can handle one more um new big push and, but it's certainly important work. I do know there are schools that are doing that. I know that Mr. Dodd, um, you know, one of your schools is actually engaging in some of that work concerning levels.
Yeah.
So there's certainly, he's, he's kind of paving the way for that. And so to be able to replicate some of that work certainly will be important.
Yeah, just for the benefit of the rest of the board, Cypress Ridge has been experimenting with a uh kind of really a, a standards-based math assessment where they break the standard down and attached to each assessment that they've created is the rubric of what would it take to be a level one or two, three, four and five on the FSA? And then, you know, it, it targets that and then produces an appropriate score based on your mastery of the standard versus just using, you know, any sort of pre-done assessment from the, the basal that, you know, then you may or may not be, you know, diving in the specifics. So they've been working on that a couple of years and be interested to see how that shakes out over time.
So, okay, so.
Hold on, sorry. Just before we go on, I just wanna, um, I don't know, bring attention. I, I know that we tend to focus a lot on third, fourth and fifth because they're the graded, they're the grades that get grades. Um, but consistently, the first and second grade scores have, at the beginning of the year have been pretty low. So if it's not just a big jump in standards from kindergarten to first, first to second, um, I may, and maybe it's because I was, you know, raised by a first grade teacher, but that, that time is so critical for teaching, reading and math. Um, I just, I, I kind of feel like we should look a little deeper into that, not this second, just in general.
We definitely have a, I don't want you to think we don't have a focus on really literacy. For the scores for this year, I'm having difficulty understanding how much of it is valid. That's, that's the only reason why for this year, just because of our different models and because we, you know, that we've had some, some, so maybe some over support. Um, and so I don't, I, from a district view, it's hard for me to tell. So that's the only reason why I was sort of pushing at that. But I totally am with you on, we, we are, we know that if we don't stop, we won't start in kindergarten. If we had more kindergarten first and second graders coming out at proficiency, really at proficiency in reading and math, the third, fourth and fifth would have a whole different picture.
Right.
Right, it's so much easier.
Exactly.
No doubt. And I know we've put some various supports in place uh over the years, which we've certainly heard back from teachers saying, thank you for this. Uh, one, one question I posed during our equity workshop a couple of weeks ago was what the achievement gap looks like over time. I was wondering, is it, is it narrow in the early years and then expand until we look at high school? Or is it always uh just maintaining a kind of a constant distance? And when I looked at the elementary, the middle and the high school, I found the gap was, was really always there. It's not like it just grew over time. And so if we can target this early, especially early literacy here in that K two piece and close that achievement gap early, that seems like, that's gotta be our best long-term solution for this.
Mm-huh.
Yeah.
We have to start the day they enter.
That's right.
I think we should all go to.
My, my, your primary teachers have that, uh, I don't know, I, I feel like the primary teachers I know really have a remediation focus. Wherever the kid is, they build from there, I think. Um, versus, I think it gets harder to do more remediation, the, the higher you go in the grades because the skills are so much more in-depth and, and catching it early is so much easier. It's, it's still a lot of work though. Sorry, I, I cut you off, Stephanie.
No, you're fine. I was gonna say, we should all take a trip to New Zealand. They have um an amazing, their literacy rate is like ninety-nine percent and on a child's sixth birthday, they bring them in and do like a very thorough monitor of literacy assessment. And then if the student is below grade level, they give them individual instruction for thirty minutes every day until they're on grade level. Their sixth birthday, I got to sit in one of those sessions and it was amazing. Um, and we get to go to New Zealand.
I second New Zealand. All I've ever heard is excellent things about their reading.
It's beautiful. But it's amazing, like that, that they have a teacher designated that does that. And I, like I said, I got to sit and watch the lesson. It was individualized. It was, I just think of like, every single day, you get thirty minutes of individual instruction that's based on what you need. And, and they're six years old, they're leaving first grade proficient or kindergarten proficient with reading. It would be it.
You know, so way back in the day when we put those academic tutors in place, you know, we, we called it that so that way it could be filled by like a TA. I think our original conversation at the time was, could that be a certified teacher? And while the cost was certainly well out of our reach, but, you know, I, I know we still don't have money growing on trees in Lake County, but, um, you know, if this is so important to us, you know, is, is that a conversation worth revisiting and is worth allocating extra dollars here in terms of the long-term payout that you'll get in these kids and their achievement?
I do know that we've provided some, some, I'm not a program girl, but I will say there are some programs who that support intervention fairly well. And so I know that our chi, we have some excellent TAs. I'm not, if, if we wanted to spend money in that direction, I'm, I will never advocate for not having a certified person in front of students for intervention. Uh, but I do know that we have some very, very qualified teacher assistants who are working with SIPs, who are working with LLI, who provide supports. And so, but we do know that even with our reading plan expectations and especially the way that the reading, the states change the reading endorsement, we, you know, we do know that we do have to have a, a reading endorsed teacher providing tier three interventions. So that's, so something to look at, right? So who is providing interventions? How skilled are they? And I, I do think, I think principals have used those TAs really well, Mr. Dodd. And I really do feel like they are, they're well-trained. We spent some time training them. Um, and I think we provided some supports to help them, really help kids. So I.
I'm not advocating replacing them. I'm, I'm saying, do in addition to them, to be honest, because I, I do know the value they bring and, and I, I'm thrilled to hear that they're trained in, in some of those pieces, SIPs, LLI, that, that's fantastic. But, but you're right, to get to that tier three level, um, you know, unfortunately, it's be, it's beyond their certification.
So if you're ready to move on, we're gonna move on to LSAs. These are our typical LSAs that we take admin year every year. Um, and so I wanted to give you a chance to look at these as well. Um, uh, we know that, that this data includes students um who've taken the test in any learning modality, brick and mortar, like live or virtual. Um, some of these were taken, it depends on the timing of when they were taken, um, because of um block scheduling. So some took it early, you know, in October, some have taken it in mid-year. So it's, it's a little bit harder to sort of say we all took it at this particular time. Um, so you can kind of see what's happening with, with those. I do know that um our curriculum specialists have offered a lot of professional development sessions um based on the content and the framework. And they also directly support teachers um in the schools, along with the regional specialists as well. Um, they, they help look at this data and they support collaborative planning around it. Uh, we provide a lot of materials to support it. Um, specifically algebra, um, we've done kind of a relaunch to talk about the block instructional framework and a professional learning group is being held to work on pacing and focus standards as we continue to progress to the remainder of the year. Um, the program specialists work with Alex, you know, we've purchased Alex, so we have to make sure that we have kids who are enrolled in that and that um they have the correct algebra preparation course for that program. We also know that our K five program specialists, our science program specialists, um, did a big data analysis with the CRTs to focus on the standards that students have been taught and that students um have not mastered to be able to intervene with those. Uh, we're doing more lessons that are digitally interactive um to be used in all the models of instruction to align with um all the areas that need support. So we're planning a March Madness um review, a spiral review to help with this. So certainly we started working with these as well. Let me show you kind of what they look like by um model. They're fairly consistent. I will say that virtual students, um, they complete the course at their own pace. So some of the virtuals percentages, they include all students who are ready to take the test at the time, at the mid-year point. So some of them may not be included in this. Um, so all students enrolled in virtual courses may not have taken the, the mid-year at the time that everybody else did. So we, that number is a little bit um hard to track.
Can I ask the date for administration of the twenty twenty? That would have been like this December, correct? November, December?
December and, mm-hmm, December. Well, for high school, it was different. It was like October.
Okay, for the mid-year.
For the mid-year, for the first half, first semester, which is like a whole year for them.
Got it. Sorry. Yeah, yeah, I'm with you. Cause the first, those classes are over, right?
Yeah.
Right. Okay.
So here's how high school looks. So this is why it gets a little bit, you know, cumbersome about looking. You're looking at, um, you're looking at the traditional term, the first block and then traditional year long and then like live term one and then like live year long. And so, um, it gets a little bit harder to compile in high school. I think, you know, I think if, if you look at the number, you do a real quick brush over, it's still algebra that basically in that traditional term one block, that is a concern when you look at that number. Um, I think we, I think people were just getting used to being on the block. I think that um, that we have, schools are being very creative about the intervention. I'm, I don't know that I've ever been more thankful for mandatory intervention time during the school day because of this. Many students, many um schools have put their algebra one students um in intervention at least once or twice a week in algebra, um, to make sure that they have the skills. Um, we are getting our algebra one scores back slowly. Um, we don't have all schools back yet. And so just looking at kids who, who didn't pass the algebra one, that, then they can have intervention time to be able to remediate, to be able to take it again in the spring. So we, we do have schools using Alex to put a group in to be able to track those, that progress. We are starting, starting a, like a homework hotline to be able to, um, the regional specialists are working on that currently to find some teachers who are willing to help to support students in algebra. So, and, and eighth grade math as well. So we've got a lot going on with math in eighth and ninth grade.
I'm just trying to draw some uh comparisons between elementary and middle, which I guess is always challenging, uh, because, uh, you know, the elementary kids are using iReady, the middle school or kids are using the LSA. So really, you only seem to reconcile at the end of the year when they both take the FSA.
Yeah.
And, and one of the things I've always noticed over time is that, for instance, in the, in the ELA elementary world, our, our state ranking is in the teens or twenties. But then when you go into middle school, it falls into the thirties. Uh, so I, I'm, I've always had trouble understanding what that disconnect is. What happens where our fifth graders are nearly at the top of the state, but then in sixth grade, suddenly they're in the middle of the state. What, what's, what's happening in that transition that, that we're not solving that the rest of the states got figured out? We're not the rest of the state, but other counties do. So that, that's the piece that puzzles me.
I agree. Us too. We're working on it. I mean, when, when you think about, when you go back to the six, seven and eight, um, you look at the, you know, we're in, we're based in the forties and fifties in middle school, thinking about like, how do we intervene?
And, and the same thing, and, and the same thing is true in science. In elementary, uh, last time we took the FSA, we were in the upper quartile. We were sixteenth out of sixty-seven, eighth grade, thirty-fourth out of sixty-seven. What happened from fifth grade to eighth grade, where suddenly we've gone from the upper quartile now to the middle? It, it puzzles me.
Yeah. We've got some focus to work to do in middle schools. So here's a, yeah. Anybody else's thoughts on that?
The slide that you just put up, the mid-year data, the percent at proficiency, nope, the one you had on.
Okay.
Are, are these, cause these are our LSAs. So are they correlated to standards that have been taught based on our curriculum maps to this point? Or is it a comprehensive test with all of the standards?
This is a comprehensive.
Okay.
So here's a new piece of an assessment. This is the one that the state has um offered up for free that we took advantage of. It's um done in three through ten ELA and three through eight in math. And so I want you to make sure that you understand, we took this in October, um, and all the way through up to December fourth. So some people, we could start, the window opens in October. Um, some people chose to get this test. It is an FSA-like test, except that it's all online. So even the younger grades who are tested paper pencil take this, it is a online assessment. Um, and it's the first time we've, we've had it. Um, one of the things that I think it's helped is just sort of how are we doing compared to the rest of the state? Um, cause that's kind of the only comparison we have right now, just to see what it, what everybody else is taking it. What are they, what are they showing in terms of a percent level three and above? But basically this would say that if they took the test today, they took FSA today, this is the percentage that would score a three or above. And remember, this is December um-ish when we pulled all the data. So when you look at this, it's, it's interesting to notice that we're very in line with the state. Not that we don't wanna be far above the state, but right now I'm looking at how far are we above? Are we equal or um do we fall below? So you can kind of see that as well. Um, Mark, to your point, you'll notice in seventh and eighth, at least in ELA, we still fall a little below.
But in fifth grade, we were above.
Yeah.
So, yeah, this is, this is.
Which is the same as what you just said, right? In sixth grade, we're a little bit below too. So, I mean, two percent, but it's still, it's a lot of students. So you think about what that would mean.
Yeah.
But if this was this data, this sort of just gives us another picture, right? So this is like another way. So when you were talking about like, we have iReady and three through, it's hard to take the LSAs and, and match them to third grade. This is one of the ways we're looking at. So here's a look at three through ten on a test that's FSA-like, that the state has put out to say you're willing to practice. What, how we've asked to, um, schools to use this is to give it first and then to give it again. And so we have a, like, we have an opportunity, they extended the window through March. And so we've asked people to go ahead and give it in. Many are taking it right now in this February range so that they have enough time to, of course, do some interventions. The, the questions are available to us. We can see what kids did on it. We can see what their distractors are. We can see how many of our students answered the distractors. There's a huge, an item analysis piece to this test that we've never had with FSA. So it's a lot of great data to be able to decipher and people are really using this to sort of break down FSA-like questions um in preparation for that assessment at the end of the year.
What does APM stand for?
Oh, goodness. Adapt, did you say what does APM stand for?
Yes, ma'am.
Adaptive Progress Monitoring Tool.
Thank you. Sorry, Dr. Burns.
It's okay. Uh, wait, what was my question?
I'll let you take a look at math and think about it, but you'll notice right away, you'll see the numbers change pretty significantly.
I can't, I can't even look at this. I'm not just talking about Lake County, like, look at the state data. It's horrible. I want to see it. That's what, can I look at this?
Must connect in the second half of the year.
I don't know what's happening. Can I, is there a website, Emily? Because you said these questions are available.
Yes, there is. And I bet Mrs. Cockroft can get you a login.
Okay.
So kind of looking at where, you'll notice that we are where I look at that. So what probably is, this is a place where I think that we, that's why we're taking kind of a big look at what's happening. Because when you look at the state and Lake, there is some, there is some differences more significant than before. Like in eighth grade, we do have a theory about eighth grade when you look at eighth grade. So we, we are not sure, in eighth grade, any student can take any test. So an eighth grade student, like the eighth grade students, all of the students in algebra could have taken the eighth grade test if they so choose in districts because there's not an algebra APM assessment because algebra is an EOC versus an FSA test. And so some may have used it to practice. We don't know. We did not test any of our algebra students. We only tested those students in pre-algebra in eighth grade. So I can't, I'm not sure, I'm not, I can't hear the conversation. Is it something that I need to?
Yeah, my, my mic wasn't on. I was just saying that your point about it being optional as to whether or not we included of the algebra one students, knowing that those are our higher performing math students. We did not test them. It was optional if they did. Whereas I think in some places in the state, they did include them, which is why there's such a disparity between the state percentage proficiency and ours. So it's really, I don't think that that's a very comparative number.
Eighth grade is a place that I would say is not as comparative. Yeah, because I wonder who did take it.
Computer-based.
All computer-based.
Yeah, it's a really great tool. It was one of the things that when I did go to speak before the State Board of Education that I really highlighted because the state provided it to us for free. And I've asked that we continue to provide it as a free option for districts because it is so FSA-aligned and we think it's a pretty good indicator and certainly provides teachers a lot of relevant data to help drive that instructional piece. So I'm hoping that they'll continue to allow us to use it free.
So that kind of wraps up the data, all the data that we've gathered so far right now. I wanted to just sort of talk about and reiterate some of the things that the superintendent said on her video about what we're continuing to do. Of course, we're still looking at, I'm implementing the Common Vision for Instruction. While we haven't met with our leaders as frequently as we have done in the past, and we do see, we do see that changing next year and hopefully we can get back to meeting with them. Monthly, we met with them our second time last week and had a great walk and looking at, are we allowing students to have grade level experiences and making sure that we are checking for understanding for those standards? And it was kind of a big, a big learning curve for all, for them and for us as we walk schools. We continued our work around equity as well, but we are still working on that Common Vision for Instruction. I do want you to know that we are still looking at this, the progress monitoring tools, thinking about how do we make sure that we, although we don't want to assess students over an abundance of an amount, we do want to use the right assessment tools to be able to make good decisions. We're, we're looking at opportunities for CTE programs. We're applying to expand ACE and Cambridge to Carver, Oak Park, Umatilla Middle and Southlake High School. It will allow to have a Cambridge high school in each region. And it also helps begin that work of creating feeder patterns to support student success within the program. We're also looking to bring our first IB program in. And so looking at that application. So the process to apply for that and provide professional development will take place during the 2022, 2122 school year. We are looking at CTE expansion programs and adding our first criminal justice program to Mount Dora High and adding unmanned aircraft systems to East Ridge High. And then dual enrollment opportunities expanding as we add a partnership with Embry-Riddle and Ustis High School and Southlake High School. We adding aviation programs through their engineering ROTC programs for upperclassmen. So those are some of the things that we're doing. I also want to make sure that I retouch on summer school opportunities. We are looking at a kindergarten readiness expansion. We held that in Rhine's before and now we're looking at doing three sites, one per region for a kindergarten jumpstart, having, you know, up to nine teachers per site, just depending on how that goes. We have about 350,000 set aside to support this. We're looking also at, we're planning, and my team is planning currently with other summer school opportunities besides summer reading camp, looking at hosting up to nine other sites, looking at middle and high school as well. We're also looking at expanding alternative schools. And so those are some of the things that are happening around. So I want to reiterate that I am really excited and proud of the work that's happening while our data is, is, I think we have a good data picture to be able to make some decisions on. I'll take any questions at this time. I do want to just go back and review to make sure that I understand what you're asking for. You wanted to see AP scores, percentage passing by course, possibly by school. And then you also asked, you wanted to see like, is there a way to pull I Ready data that allows us to sort of see the, is it pre-emerging? Is it on grade level? Is it above kind of that whole, is there a way to see where they're at in that grade level band? Is that correct?
I was also wondering if you had a chance to look at, thinking about what's related to attendance for Lake County Virtual, where students are tracking, if they're behind or on pace? Or do we have, I know that's.
I do have that.
So largely pace-driven. And.
Yes.
Some kids are probably really good at that and others, it's a learning opportunity.
If you give me one second, I can tell you what that is. I'm sorry. We have. In terms of, I looked at high schools first and grades nine through 12. We have about 250 students that have less than 50% of their first semester courses completed. And it's 250 of the 957, nine through 12 students. It's about 26%. So it's a, it's a rough estimate. So we have about 26% of the students in virtual, in high school right now that are needing some extra pushes to make sure they're on track. I can share a spreadsheet with you, Paul, that basically let you see that.
And I guess I'd ask about the strategies here. I know teachers are probably calling and emailing and talking to parents and saying, hey, your kid, gosh, it only, it could be less than halfway through the first semester. And we've already started second semester. And that, that's got huge implications for the end of the year when they need to test or to be ready to come back to brick and mortar next year potentially. How do we get that many kids back on track?
Well, it's, when we have that, when we have a seven-period day, we, it's allow, one of the ways you could do it is to allow for kids to use one of those periods to be able to use those virtual labs. If they return to brick and mortar, to be able to use one of those virtual lab opportunities, to be able to take a course, to be able to catch up on some of that. And that's one of the ways that we've been thinking about how do we help those students? And if they do come back brick and mortar, of course, we have some opportunities for summer to be able to continue to work. But we are doing, we are starting to track that and to begin thinking about how do we support those? I know people are making those phone calls. I know virtual students, teachers are trying to get on and support students and tutor them and to be able to help them and plan some one-on-one sessions with them. And so looking at different, different ways. Because I, it is a concern. I would say that I would need to know how big of a concern because I would need to look at what we have in regular traditional school and what that looks like in terms of traditional, like live. And if we have, I have a comparison to that. So I need to pull those numbers still.
I remembered my question. Is the, is the state giving us any funding this year for summer school or are we funding that? Are you saying in-person?
I do mean, I do mean, I have, yes, we are planning an in-person summer school. We have some, we have different pots of money. We have reading dollars for summer reading camp. We have Title IV through Ms. Pearson's department that helps support some other summer school opportunities. We also have CARES funding to use for tutoring. So we do have, we do have support for that.
Okay, good. Excellent.
Dr. Weisfeld, hit me. Oh, go ahead. Dr. Burns, go ahead. I thought you were done.
My last question. Teachers will talk about, I have a low group this year. At the district level, do we see that in the FSA scores from year to year? Is there just like this, this group of fifth graders? Or is it such a big group at the district level that that kind of comes out in the wash? I guess what I'm trying to get at is, is that, is that middle school? Like, is it, we need to work on teachings, supports for teaching? Or do they just happen to have a rough group? Possibly.
So I always believe that parents are sending us the best kids that they have. And so I would always say that it's our job to make sure that we reach every kid and make sure they know, make sure that we reach, to make sure every kid's successful. So I would never, while I get that some kids may come in further behind or more ahead, I would never, ever, you will never hear me talk about a group of students that come in as a, as a low group of students or as more, I, I, I can't even say it right now. I can't even answer that. So I'm just, I don't have that ability. So I really believe that it, that is, that is exactly why we are in the profession that we're in and that all kids can be successful and all kids can learn at high levels. And it is our responsibility to teach people and to help people figure out how to do that at the district level.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Weis.
Can I ask one more question really quickly just for her? We had a gentleman here, was it last week that we had members of the community? And there was a pastor that stood up that spoke about if they, if we communicated or had like, got more information out. So what I was thinking, like, as we were talking about the disparity between some of our Lake Live students and catching them up, but also knowing that we, I think it would be presumptuous for us to just think brick and mortar solutions, especially because we know some of our higher need populations are ones that are taking advantage of our virtual options. And so I was wondering if there was a way that we could communicate with some of our leaders within these pockets of communities where we see a larger amount of Lake Live students, if that exists? It's like, are we seeing that there's like more densely populated areas of students that are attending Lake Live or, or that's where we're seeing disparities, Lake Live? So that we could maybe work with community leaders to say, we're gonna, we're gonna, I know we've got some CARES money where we could do some tutoring. We're gonna have it like the Ustis Community Center from five to seven on Wednesday evenings and then get with some of these leaders in the community to spread the word, to get some of these kids to come. Because we have all these resources. I think it's a matter when they're not with us face-to-face is how do we get these resources to them and ensure that they're receiving the support they need? So I don't know if that's an area we can look at, like where are populations that are denser? And how can we get into that community outside of school hours versus maintaining this eight to three or seven to two approach?
And just to clarify, Mr. Dodd asked me about like virtual students and their course completions versus like, like lives. But I hear what you're saying. We offer a lot of online tutoring. I think what's hard for like, so I think actually some of our traditional students are taking advantage of some of the online tutoring, but our Lake Life students, they're online all day. So I don't know if they love the option of doing more tutoring at night. But some are, and we definitely offer it right now. So we have lots of tutoring going on. It started earlier this year. And so we have all tutoring happening right now, online, virtual. But I, I can, I definitely would like to take a look at that, Ms. Luke, to look at, see where are our pockets? Maybe look at grades, maybe look at attendance, you know, and see if we can maybe find some community supports.
And if they offered it at like, at like a community building and their social distancing and we have some interaction that can happen where it's not all virtual? Because I hear Lake Live too, all day, that would be trending, so.
But I think that to your point, that getting the community engaged in this process.
Yes.
It was very clear how important it is.
It was, they asked for it.
They asked for it.
Right.
And I think that, that certainly, I think would pay dividends.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a different issue with the like virtual scenario was that these kids are just not sitting down doing the work, right? They're just falling farther and farther behind in the course.
Right.
Yeah.
If mom and dad are at work all day and kids at home, I just don't know how you.
But if mom and dad are home in the evenings or if somebody's home to say, let's go to this community center, maybe that would be a way to pick them up. I don't know.
Are we, are we sending a, a tracking progress report to the parents saying, hey, your kid is still only 26% the way through the, the course?
Yes, we are.
Okay. And what are they doing with that? Why are they not responding?
May I ask a couple of quick questions for clarification?
Sure.
Dr. Felton, I think I heard you say that in order for a teacher to do intervention with tier three students, the reading endorsement is required. Is that true for elementary certified teachers as well?
Yes, for, for reading interventions. And Amy's sitting there, I hope she's taking a hard yes and agreeing with me.
Okay.
It's tier three interventions for, for reading.
Okay. And my last question, are our eighth graders who are enrolled in algebra taking the LSA exams?
Eighth graders who are.
Yeah, are they gonna sit for the algebra exam as well as the LSA exam? Or are they just taking the algebra exam if they're taking algebra as a class?
They take the algebra exam if they are taking the algebra class.
Okay. So we don't have their, our brighter kids, we don't, we won't have their scores in our regular math scores?
That is correct. They have to take the, they have to take the assessment of the course that they are enrolled in.
Okay.
But.
Thank you.
So we said earlier, those students that, what year they take the test and that will account. So we did have some eighth graders from 2019, 2020 who took the algebra one assessment in 2021. So they just took it like in October or November. They're freshmen now, but they were eighth graders when they took algebra. Do we have that data back?
We, we should have some reports from the, if they just took it in December, we have some of the schools coming back.
I was gonna say, I already have, I know Jensen's score, so they're in.
We have some of the scores that are back. We don't have all of them back.
Any, any timeline and when we might expect to see some of these EOCs? I think geometry as well is another one we're waiting on. Kids in, kids who took that at the end of the first semester, right? That's 30% of their score and they don't even know what grade they have in the course yet because of that. So.
So I have the same question. My understanding, and Amy helped me correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that those are trickling in depending on which day in the window schools took it and students took it, so they're coming in. So I didn't, I don't have, I didn't have a complete data set to bring you today. So, but as we get those, we can certainly, we certainly have, are getting some reports.
Still trickling. That's so hard, and just computer graded?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
Have to read an essay on trillions.
Yeah.
I just think that will give us a different conversation point too. Like if we can see what the, if there was a decline from when they finished the school year in March, well, March last year and they took the assessment in October, November, did we see that slide? And that could kind of give some insight to you, but, or did they do great?
Yeah. And students have the option to take it or not take it. They can, they can also wait and take geometry and use the geometry. So that was an optional test. So not, not every student enrolled in algebra in eighth grade would have taken the fall exam either. It was an option. And some can still take it in the spring.
Okay.
So again, this day, the data set's hard to complete, you know, to take every kid who was in it. And so if, if, there's no more questions for me, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Pearson, who's gonna talk about, you had asked for, we had, I had talked to each of you about the DA schools since we didn't have reports in the beginning of the year, we didn't have data to share, that they would, that we would share some data mid-year. And so I've asked her to go ahead and, and share some of that.
We're gonna do a quick five-minute break though, before we get started.
Okay. That'd be great.
We're starting right now. Okay, we're all set. We're back. So, Ms. Pearson.
Here today to provide a school improvement update on both of our targeted schools. Here to share some successes as well as some challenges. Both of the principals are at their school site today. I am filling in and standing in for them. We felt it necessary that they go ahead and stay and handle some things. And I would be able to take some questions back if you have additional questions and needs. I do also have with us Diane Linebaugh, who is our Florida Department of Education representative. She's on the Zoom and she's also with us. She has provided additional support through the Bureau of School Improvement onsite as well as our district and regional teams. So I wanted to introduce her as well since she took the time to be a part of this meeting. Both schools' school improvement plans are structured around four goals. Targeted focus around academic achievement, also looking at their culture and climate, which includes those early warning signs, as well as positive supports on campus, intervention and acceleration, and leadership and building capacity. Both schools' enrollment is pretty good with regard to face-to-face and traditional. We have most of the students back. We have most of the students back at Beverly Shores. There's 32 students that are Beverly Shores zone, receiving Lake Live instruction. And at Leesburg Elementary, we have 81. Both schools also have numerous tutoring opportunities that are available, as well as other clubs that can continue to support and engage students on campus. Dr. Weiskopf has shared a lot of the district-wide data. So you're seeing some of the district data as well, relative to how it looks with regard to our two targeted schools. And at the top, absences really are, are a huge concern for both of our schools. And both of the schools are working to really provide interventions, incentives, callouts, problem solving around their data points. You can see that there's a huge increase in the number of students absent, 10% or more of the time so far at Beverly Shores and also at Leesburg Elementary. As well as, you had a question?
No, I, I'm sorry, I was just, I think I was just trying to digest that piece. I mean, we, we've just discovered that it's no surprise that we're gonna see more kids absent this year. But these numbers far exceed the, the regional averages.
Absolutely. They, they are alarming. And so there has been a lot of support put there with regard to how are we dialoguing with families and communities? These are our two highest percentage Title I schools as well. And so we know that there are certain challenges presented with regard to the pandemic. And they're working with families to see how we can eliminate whatever it is of the barriers that were causing students not to be at school. And again, this doesn't include quarantine numbers, so.
So what, what barriers are parents saying exist that they need help eliminating to get their kids to school?
Well, some of what Dr. Weiskopf shared is the, there's multiple people living in one family unit many times. So with regard to someone getting COVID, it might be harder to quarantine because maybe we don't have the same space to be able to quarantine. So we have some.
There's some kind of quarantine absences, right?
No, we don't count the quarantine, but they're not coming to school.
Right.
You know, so if some.
They aren't labeled as, they're not labeled as quarantine on our end.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, maybe a family member that's in quarantine.
Exactly.
And the parents are opting to keep the child home, although the child's not in quarantine.
We have not quarantined the child, but they've opted to stay home based on someone else that may.
I'm surprised by how much that happens. Like even in my personal conversations with friends, they're like, well, you know, so and so got quarantined, so we just kept them home. I'm like, oh, well, they're not coded that way, but.
Right.
And that was a big concern at the beginning. I know I've had that conversation before, it was just, but we are seeing that. I mean, I've, I've heard it more times than you would think.
So we don't count it as quarantine, but it does pose an absence. And so there's numerous different reasons, you know? But they are working to ensure that, you know, we know this data, we had this data early, and they're working to decrease those numbers. Tardies, for the most part, we've had a small increase in tardies and suspensions in school and out of school. We definitely have had a decrease across the board. Slight increase at Beverly Shores, but for the most part, those two numbers, we've been working to decrease district-wide. And it's also present at those two schools as well. Then again, here's our iReady data. And so this is our ELA iReady data. And kindergarten, the way it's presented is you see the district lines, which are light green from last year compared to dark green this year. Beverly Shores is light green, red, and then dark green for data this year. And then Leesburg is the blue, light green last year, dark green this year. So that you can kind of see across where we have some dips and where we have some gains. And so in kindergarten, we are seeing increases at the district level and we saw increases at both schools as well. First grade, we have a dip at the district level and also a dip at both schools. In second grade, you see Beverly Shores is slightly up in that area compared to their last year data. And Leesburg in fourth, or third grade is slightly up as well. Fourth grade is down district-wide. We also have some decreases there. We've put a lot of focus into fourth grade because the dips at fourth grade are a little bit more impactful. And then in fifth grade, we are seeing Leesburg Elementary and Beverly Shores actually are up and the district is pretty much holding from last year to this year for ELA. And trend continues through math. I know we've already had some conversation with regard to math and the pieces district-wide that are impacting as well at the school level. So same with kindergarten, we see the increase, but each of the areas, we see a decrease at our school levels and up slightly at the fifth grade level with iReady. Our next data point is the APM. And so this one is actually the October-November data. They are in the window right now testing for the mid-year APM data. So we are very encouraged to see what growth has happened with regard to the interventions that have been in place so thus far. But when you compare in terms of ELA for, we, we included the state, the district, and then the school because we have some drops statewide, as you've seen as well, that are also impacting at the district level. And so we have third grade for both schools. Beverly Shores coming in slightly lower than Leesburg. And then both of them at the same level for fourth grade and fifth grade, just a point behind. Last year, I mean, not last year, but the last time they FSA tested, Beverly Shores' ELA was 28% and Leesburg was 44%. And so they came in October, November at roughly Beverly Shores being 20% and Leesburg Elementary around 22. So we're hoping that this particular assessment is gonna give us more of a indicator as to how students will actually perform. And since they're in the window now, and this was really their baseline assessment, we're eager to use that data to continue to drive instruction. Math for their APM, again, in third grade, Beverly Shores slightly lower than Leesburg. And in fourth grade, again, we have considerable concern with fourth grade ELA as well as math. And fifth grade, we are 11 and 6%. Their math last year, or not last year, but 18, 19 FSA, keep forgetting, we didn't take any assessment last year. 26% was the last FSA score for math for Beverly Shores and 37 for Leesburg. Right now, we're roughly at 7% and 6%, but you can also see the state is roughly at 13%, 13% as well. So it is alarming. I know there's tons of intervention going on, there's tons of support, not just at these two schools, but actually district-wide tutoring opportunities have been opened up, as well as small group instruction. Our science proficiency, and this is our district LSA assessment. And so last year, their district LSA 27. And this year, Beverly Shores has increased 10 percentage points from last year to 37. Leesburg 35, fell slightly just to 31, and the district was at 54. So this is our actual, our assessment that we're comparing. So it gives us a, an idea of the growth that we can see at Beverly Shores and just a slight decrease there with regard to Leesburg. So what are we doing? As I've said, there's a lot of intervention that's taking place and there's a lot of progress monitoring and additional diagnostics, as well as the use of the early warning science data to be able to create specific intervention groups. The interventions are listed to the side on the left and you see that they have numerous interventions from the SIPs program and LLI, which covers support for ELA and reading, the area phonics, phonemic awareness, vocabulary and comprehension. And then we also have teacher-led supports in ELA and math where they utilize iReady, some Stars lessons, Science Bootcamp, things like that. And there's also supports for social, emotional, behavioral, in the form of leaps lessons that help with some, like what you may call character development supports. We still utilize our restorative practices for behaviors to ensure that we're keeping our students here in school. And then Sanford Harmony is also a program that's used to support some problem solving, peer-to-peer relationship. And these occur in tier two and tier three for additional supports.
I don't see Alex on the list.
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Is also in place.
Just curious.
It should be there, thank you, Ms. Luke, absolutely. Alex is used for math and they both have used that program last year. So yes, Alex should, should be also a part of there.
What percentage of kids are identified at Beverly Shores or Leesburg for tier two or tier three? How does that compare against other schools?
I can't give the percent right now, but I will tell you, we look at the same percentage as we would in any other school. That we have about 15 to 20 because of the amount that, that can be served. But remember, Beverly Shores has an extra hour of instruction.
Right. But, so, so that statement is what, what terrifies me, that we identify the same percentage of kids. But if most of these kids were in any other school, because of the, the nature of the performance of the rest of the kids in that school, they would be getting MTSS support tier two or tier three, who are not necessarily getting it at Beverly Shores or Leesburg.
Well, I think we do some things within the core instruction to support the needs of some of, of all the students when we see some common areas of need, so we can revisit it there. And then also with regard to the intervention time, specifically at Beverly Shores, that is very structured so that we can get more students involved, because everyone has that time every day. Leesburg is a little bit more challenging with regard to that because of the number of students.
But one of the benefits of the formalized process is that you then create a targeted intervention for that specific kid and you track it, and then you know whether or not that intervention is succeeding. I guess when I'm looking at these numbers, yeah.
Yeah. They have additional teacher assistance too at both schools. So that we could be able to provide some specific intervention, targeted interventions under the direction of a lead teacher because of not being able to do the tier three, so to speak, unless it is a certified teacher. So that was another way through some of their UNISIC money. We did buy some extra teacher assistance, be able to assist with that and run some intervention.
So, so how could we, what, what do, I mean, what do we need to do as a board to ensure that they've got the resources they need to make it work? It sounds like we've fallen short, right? I mean, if, if these kids who would normally get tier two or tier three MTS intervention elsewhere and that be tracked in the formalized process, don't get it here just because there are so many kids who need it, then we've done them a disservice. So.
Well.
I, I don't know, I mean, the, the, honestly, as I'm sitting here digesting this, this is making me feel very sick. And I think there are just so many kids who are struggling. And I don't, I, I feel like we as a board need to do whatever we need to, to do to make sure that these kids don't, don't fall off the earth.
Yes.
Yeah, we have, this is Cunningham.
As former principal, proud principal of Beverly Shores, schools like Beverly Shores and Leesburg Elementary are unique. And MTSS tier three modifications, as you know it, in some of our other schools, doesn't look the same in those schools. Principals and staff have to be extremely innovative and creative. And as Mrs. Pearson was saying, don't think those kids don't get those same services. They just look different. For example, they do target specific plans for those individual students. So I don't think you have to feel that the board has slighted them in any way. Because I think, or at least when I was the principal there, we, we had resources. And, you know, we made significant growth and, and it can happen. It's, it's just a different way of looking at it. You can't look at it through the lens that you look at when you look at, you know, some of our other schools that have a different student population. And I was actually at Beverly Shores yesterday and they had some teacher training going on. And I felt very good about what I saw. I think that, that the people who work there are putting in the work. And I think that they're utilizing some good strategies. And while I don't think, while I can tell you, it's not something that's gonna perfect itself overnight, I think that given time, we will see progress. I mean, you know, Beverly Shores has made days, so we, we can do that again.
There's, there's no doubt. And I, I mean, high expectations are certainly one of those elements of that.
But can't we get there in two years, I guess?
Here's where I just wrestle, because I know that we've got a charter contract that's gonna be coming through for us, an application, and they're coming in as a school of hope because they're, because of the, these schools' performance. And who are they gonna siphon away? You know, I mean, when you think about the business side of, of schools, I, I, I don't know how to compete with, with.
I think one of the most unfortunate things is, I believe beyond any shadow of a doubt that had we tested this past year, we would have seen Beverly Shores come out of DA status. And, but I, I think Ms. Cunningham's absolutely right. Just to say that because they're not, they're not identified as tier three doesn't mean that they're not getting intensive services because they have, they have an abundance of resources there. And Ms. Pearson and her team, along with Ms. Dudley, they're, they're there a lot. I know they have invested numerous, numerous hours of providing, not only professional development, but working with students and tracking these students, providing intervention services. I think you'll see LLI and SIPs and all those programs intensively utilized in those schools. And so I don't, I don't want you to have that sick feeling in your stomach because I can tell you, just like she said when she was there yesterday, there are, there are amazing things happening for kids at those schools. Our data may not reflect it at the moment, but I believe it would have. I think it really would have last year. And I think of all the things that I'm most disappointed in was the fact that that school in particular didn't get a chance to show that they would have come out of DA status last year. So, and this year, it's that unique year of, it's, it's hard to rely on the data that we have. And so it's, you know, it's the effects of living through and leading through a pandemic that, you know, makes us all a little sick at times, but, so.
And I will tell you, both schools have very intricate spreadsheets where they're tracking all of the students. It might not be as formalized as you would think of other schools when we have a meeting and they're going through and the problem, like, like they are looking at the groups of students and really tracking so that we can make sure that they're not losing anyone. They've been very creative with scheduling as well, so that every minute of time can be utilized to target the needs. So both of those schools have long lists of sheets where we see who is servicing which students. And although it might be not as formalized in terms of all of the paperwork that goes around with the students that are actually logged for receiving tier two and tier three in our system, they have created supports in place to ensure.
So, so without that sort of tracking, without the graphing of the data and monitoring that, how do we know that these supports are, are effective? Or how do we know to change them?
They're tracking them within a group. So it will look a little bit different than here in my small group of my students receiving tier two and then my one-on-one that's receiving tier three. But they almost have another group, which is here are students that need specific skills and or standard support. And I might not be tracking each student's individual data, but I am tracking the data of the group and I have an interventionist that's assigned to that group. So within their reading block, when we have, when we break off into centers or stations, there could be a teacher-led station, there might be students working on some skill, skill specific. And then here's the army of interventionists that come into third grade and pull for those kids as well, so.
And, and to set the record clear, I have, I have no doubt that people are working very hard at this. I just wonder if there's enough of them, like, right? I mean, no matter how talented somebody is, they can only see so many people in a day based on the number of minutes available, right? And, and tier three, just mathematically, of how many kids who would normally be in tier three at any other school? There's, there's no physical way that, you know, there aren't 35 hours in a day, you know? So that, that, I, I just, I just struggle to understand if, if that many kids would normally be tier three that were providing that level of support on one-on-one or small group attention. I, I just, I don't see how that happens.
Their class sizes are relatively small, for one. I think we've added additional allocations over there and certainly, either of you could speak to exactly what those class sizes look like. You know, and that's certainly one way that, that we've helped to better meet their needs. And they do have a lot of teacher assistance, so they do have a lot of allocations. They have a lot of people pushing in in addition to, to district staff that are working alongside folks there. So I, providing intensive services, I can tell you, does happen.
So, so the, these folks, what challenges are they saying that, that, I mean, I'm, I'm not doubting their work. I'm just doubting, why aren't they seeing, you know, the?
Better returns.
Better returns this year, right? What, what barriers are they saying exist that are keeping them from seeing the better returns? I wanna put those resources in place for those people.
Yeah, some of it is attendance, right? Because if we have 45% of the students, that's almost half of the students that may not be there on a given day or missing 10%, right? So even if I am working very hard on that, I need the students to be there to be able to receive that. So we are both going at the same time, ensuring there's consistency with students being there from day to day to receive that, as well as continuing the supports that are in place. So they do have those particular challenges.
So if, and, and this, this, this may sound crazy of an idea, but, so if we've seen better attendance at Lake Live, is this not an encouragement for some, for some of these people to say, if you're not gonna come to school, at least log into this Lake Live class? I don't know, you know, not to say that you're gonna go full-time. not to say that you're gonna go full-time Lake Live, but maybe, I mean, could you put somebody just to just to handle the absences on Lake Live and say, at least log in? You know, and 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 sit with me for a little bit versus doing nothing, you know?
Right, I understand. It it is a bit challenging. They don't have many kids really actually on Lake Live.
Right, right, right.
And so we have looked at that as well. It is challenging to say, you know, kids from grade span kindergarten up to fifth grade handle them when they're absent, when we have different kids absent, you know, every day. I know they have tutoring in place and so that becomes more specific to the grade level. So if you are absent, you know, how can we get you online to provide some one-on-one tutoring? And then that is more specific to the students of what they're actually missing rather than just being on Lake Live waiting to, you know?
Right, right. That's fine. So so I guess if, I mean, if like I almost want, I would almost love to see like some sort of hotline, you know, of, okay, I'm absent today, I'm gonna go log in. Uh, and you know, maybe if you don't have internet at home, we were able to provide some sort of hotspot or something, you know, to give you the the equity of resources available to just make that possible. But I mean, that that that's better than than just not going, right? So I I don't know.
I don't know. I don't know if it's practical.
This is the one that's gonna cost me some sleep at night.
I will tell you that um, we've spent problem-solving time around those things, right? The team works very hard. They, in their meetings, in their problem-solving meetings, they're coming with, here's a list of kids in that have experienced these attendance issues. They're looking at, we're breaking up into a team to call these families. We wanna get our kids here. We want, they're having those conversations with those parents, how can we help you? So just what you're saying is what the team has been doing. And they are very deliberate, they are very targeted, and they have such a caring team over there that they meet about these things weekly to be able to, you know, break that phone sheet up, let's see where they are, let me find my kids, let me make sure they're there. Where are you having problems? Teachers, how can I support? They are doing that work. It's it's very challenging and I've seen them work and they're being targeted and they're trying to fill the gaps that they can. Tutoring, after-school clubs, early morning activities, all of those things are in place.
But we go, I go back to Mrs. Luke's comment and when Pastor Watkins, I think it was, was here. Is Leesburg is a very tight community and maybe help getting help from strong community leaders would be a resource.
Yes.
So at the bottom, at the bottom line is if they're not in school, they can't learn.
Yeah.
So either we've gotta get the hotspots, internet connection to support that, but it may be better suited to come up with those solutions. Our community leaders who have relationships.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Maybe.
Yeah. And I know they do have partnerships built. They're, I'm sure they're probably listening. So they're probably taking down some of these pieces as well for extra things that they could reach out to.
Is the the person that's from the state, are they on here now?
Yes.
And what what do they?
Um, Ms. Linnebach, she is the Bureau Chief, I believe is her title, for um, our region, which is our central Florida um, area region and touches some of South Florida. So she's over pretty much monitoring us and the support we provide. To, yes, to our, um, and the schools that are in school improvement.
If she can hear me, because like we can't see, but I do, Mr. Dodd touched on something and I don't wanna get in the weeds about it. But but the School of Hope and that whole process where it allowed grants, federal, state, I think, for charter schools to encourage them. And that there is one that's looking at um, the Leesburg area. And yet, if you looked at the individual data, even though we don't have the test scores, we would see the gains made. And a concern of mine with this group is they're gonna gentrify the top-tier kids, they're gonna move to this school, and we're gonna lose the resources. So I'm wondering why there couldn't be a mechanism in place to have evaluated to move us out of the School of Hope zone.
And weren't they projected to be a a low B or a high C? Wasn't their data that to suggest that they were projected to to make that increase?
Beverly Shores was projected at C.
Okay, so if we had that data, then why wouldn't the state use that to, exactly your point, to allow that School of Hope to come in if the projected data was B, C?
And the real conundrum is, is they've added a a ton of money to encourage and yet we don't have the need, but they may be coming anyway based on that criteria.
Right.
So um, you have a comment? Is this Linnebach?
I'm sorry, she's the Regional Executive Director.
And you're on mute. There you go.
Hi, good morning. Um, thank you for allowing me to be here and um, I think you're very much on point in terms of thinking about what are the things that the school board could do to continue to make improvements at both of these schools. And I will also say that in terms of what Ms. Pearson has shared, those are all accurate things that we're seeing being put in place to help students. In response to your particular question, um, I work under the Bureau of School Improvement. Our responsibility and my responsibility as a Regional Executive Director is to monitor school improvement processes specific to schools that are low performing. Your question regarding uh, the School of Hope process falls under a different bureau and that's a Bureau of School Choice. I have, since my last visit at Beverly Shores Elementary, there was some conversation and I'm in the process of putting um, our district contacts and in communication with that bureau, but it doesn't fall underneath um, our Bureau of School Improvement jurisdiction in terms of what my responsibilities are in in Lake County Public Schools.
Okay, thanks.
I think the problem is statutory because the statute gives X number of, you know, it gives a specific formula and so there is no state doubt.
With no doubt, they were able to go back.
Right, they would just look at the previous five years or previous three years and so on and so forth.
It it, it was a loop, kind of a loophole that I don't think was fair, that's all. Okay, I don't wanna get in the weeds about that. That'll be another day discussion. Okay.
Okay.
Yes, it will.
So um, many assessments, there were ongoing many assessments and we administered the many assessments in the first nine weeks and second nine weeks. And teachers utilize that data to have additional data chats, triangulate the data around the many assessments, the I R E D scores, the A P M, um, as well as what they were observing in the classroom. And from there, uh, they make adjustments to their instruction. Interventionists make adjustments to their targeted intervention. It's an ongoing process um, that continues to happen. And like I said, they are in their window right now for um, A P M. And that is a continuous cycle that will um, happen with regard to the data. The onsite monitoring is in conjunction and collaboration with our state team, which is led by Ms. Diane Linnebach. And then we also have Mr. Brian Jones, which I think you met before. He's been here in the boardroom and um, had represented uh, for our state team, along with my team in academic services interventions, as well as Ms. Dudley's team in the region, and then the school team. So there are numerous resources that are provided to both the schools to assist. We assist with helping with the planning um, and delivery of instruction, providing side-by-co, side-by-side coaching. Even this year, we've had staff that have filled into classrooms so that we would not have to have subs in place um, when teachers were quarantined or where there was a need to ensure that we have certified um, teachers there. The coaches, as well as other support staff, anyone that's certified, when there's quarantines, they are in the rooms and they are making sure that um, we have the most support um, for the students that we can. There's also been support with regard to learning walks, so that we can monitor our district instructional framework and ensure that we are in line with that expectation as we see our instruction, the use of restorative practices and thinking maps and the intervention programming. We also um, support implementation of the professional development and work with the school to um, ensure their professional development has side-by-side or in-class support as we move forward. So a lot of feet on the ground. Beverly Shores, um, after their last instructional review, because this year they're still receiving instructional reviews from the state as well as the district. And after their um, mid-year instructional review, some of their next steps were to continue with their monitoring of the data. They're looking closely again at their lowest quartile and their S S O groups. As we know, those are indicators where we will be gauged on performance. We're gonna continue to look at our small group instruction, targeted standards instruction, and strengthen the protocols around attendance and looking at attendance incentives, continue with the restorative practices, tutoring and intervention and the ongoing PD. Leesburg looks pretty much the same. Um, they're scheduled for their next instructional review in March. We actually had one instructional review um, scheduled that we had to postpone because of the number of quarantines that were happening on the particular day that it was scheduled. So we have rescheduled that and we will be there to support their needs and they continue pretty much those same next steps as well as looking at students that are falling behind with their grades and the use of that Google Classroom to provide additional virtual support when students are out for attendance issues.
I have a question.
Yes.
Okay. One thing I didn't see on here in regards to like next steps or even like the support that we're offering and and it just keeps coming back to mind in regards to the the proficiency conversation versus the growth conversation versus the number of standards that we continue to to face with a deficit that is the disparity between the even just the district and these schools. So in the P L C process, we we identify our essential standards and I heard you mention that, but what I wonder is at our lower-performing schools, can we not identify like the big rocks, like the essential standards? And really press those rather than looking at, okay, I have forty-five to teach in fourth grade. If we know that our fourth graders leave with these fifteen, these are our chunks, like this is a modified curriculum map, it's different from, you know, the district framework, but can we just focus the instruction on what we know they have to know and be able to do for the next grade level? And modify that sort of work and have the P L C process to define the essential standards and then develop some common assessments? Are we, are we doing that?
Yeah, we we don't do essential standards and say, here's the three that we're always gonna do, but actually we use it in the instructional focus calendars. And we look at the data. Where are our big ones that we need to make sure that our students have, so to speak? So it is a form of looking at essential standards.
I just think when you're, when you are looking at a disparity that's that large, when you're looking at that that big of a gap, a gap, and when you're considering that your school is gonna be judged this year in a pandemic, knowing the progress that we saw last year and that this year they're not even gonna consider the growth that's happening in these buildings. But we have to be very strategic about the standards that we're teaching our kids. And we know, and I'm speaking math world, just so you guys know, so I'm not gonna pretend ELA is in my wheelhouse, but in math, we know in first grade, they have got to master addition subtraction to twenty. We know in second grade, it's gotta be through the thousands. We know in third grade, we go to multiplication of fractions. We know. Like, can we push, 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 develop instruction, professional development realm, those big rocks? To start the building block process because math's about reasoning and making connections. So I feel like if we can develop those and they can start to make some connections where we're skipping, so to speak, standards that aren't as essential.
Yes, that work is happening. I mean, in looking at, here's our data deficits, that's how the instructional focal focused calendar is first built. Then every day to run, it's adjusted um, based on that, where our students strengths, because we wanna also identify strengths and amplify the strengths that we see. Because if there's strengths in certain standards, many times that can be the help to push, to strengthen the next standard that we see as a deficit. So it's ongoing where they're looking at that and making adjustments to the instructional focus calendar to ensure that we have some of those core standards at proficiency. I I do think that um, the, a lot of that work has to come in the summer. And so we have another unique challenge of we're changing standards again, we're changing, and every time that happens, we're, you know, coming back and revamping and doing that work. But it's a great team there. We love doing the work with them, but it is a constant, ongoing um, piece.
I just figured it'd be easier left and it'd be a better time spent, more deliberate, having a plan. Dr. Feldner said, having the systems in place and following the system, that that's a system that we know has worked in improvement for schools. Um, my other thought was if we could put something in place and I, and we're still hoping, I know everybody's thinking we're not gonna hopefully be graded, so to speak, on these test scores, but we definitely wanna see them, but we're gonna see proficiency scores, right? So would there be a way for us to, when we come back and analyze data, to consider their growth? Like, let's look at the beginning, middle, and end of the year for these two schools specifically. I know every school would probably appreciate the benefit of that. But if there was a measure that we could take into place to scale the work versus the proficiency?
Oh, absolutely. I'll say, we are always measuring the growth, like constantly looking at that. So I know at the end of the year, we'll have another snapshot. Um, I would tell you, it is very challenging this year. We've worked a lot with our state team because even in walking and looking and trying to support, it's hard to know where the bar is this year.
Right.
So we have relied on some of that because they are seeing schools statewide, where are other schools that are in this category. Some of the feedback that we have is, you know, Lake County is in a in a good space, even though some of this data is alarming. We have schools in South Florida that hadn't even come back until October, November. And so we have had stu, we have had teachers in front of students since the beginning of this year. I know that that having a teacher in front of a student and students back in school is a good thing with regard to the instruction and the um, continuity of instruction. So that is a strength, that is a plus. And we are really hoping that because we have been very consistent and and we have done the due diligence with that, that we will see the gains and our students will be better off for that. We do have schools, you know, that have not had kids back. Attendance looks uh, worse than ours in certain areas of the state. So I applaud the team that's there because it has been hard work.
Yeah, for sure.
Not just them, district-wide, our schools, it has been hard work.
Right.
Mm-hmm. This has been an incredibly hard year. I wanted to ask, based on those A P M test scores, they would essentially put our kids like a year behind, right? Like, if I look at those, they're ninety-five percent of our kids are not proficient, which means they're in theory, like, a previous year. So what, where do we think that they, do we think that those kids are there? Is that what the teachers are reporting? Or do we think that that test is wrong? And the, um, where do we think our kids are based on what the teachers are teaching?
Now, we have considerable um, concern for math district-wide. That there there are gaps district-wide. This is the first time that we've had that assessment, so it is hard to gauge. There's nothing to look at relatively to say um, with regard to the A P M. But even in our I R E D and in our mid-year data, math has been a concern before we even had the A P M scores. We had identified that. So we have um, additional tutoring opportunities. We we brought in Alex. That was the, one of the main reasons to give all students some access to that so that they could be getting to do some skill building on their own. So the Alex licenses that you approved were for every student to have the opportunity, not just students that fell into what we would consider our tier two, tier three. That the need was so great district-wide, let's give everyone the opportunity to be able to get some additional support.
So does Alex bring them back to beginning? Like, who, like, in my experience, if I can't add fractions, I I can't add, I can't add fractions, right? Like, if they're not adding at a high enough level, they can't do that. Are we backing them up to before their frustration point? And then bringing them forward? Does Alex do that or is that the teachers?
Yeah, it gives them a diagnostic and kinda norms them and then identifies here some of the skills. And so they can perform through the program if they want to go ahead and get those skills built. Or they can hone in on, here's a a skill that I really want to practice more and go there. So it offers both options.
Okay, that makes sense.
Can I just put in a reminder about the A P M? Just Dr. Burns, in case, just a reminder about. So I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Pearson, I think both Beverly Shores and Leesburg took that test fairly early, like in that October range. So remember that that was if they had taken the F S A on that date, what the proficiency would have been. So I don't wanna, I don't wanna say that they're not on grade level yet because it was very, very, that first one, that first window open, you know, we we thought we have some, an opportunity to get some data, let's get some data. And so they took it very early. So just know that if they had taken it on October fifteenth.
Right, okay.
That's the number of kids who would have been proficient. So just know that that's really, really early in the, in the year. So I wouldn't
I didn't learn this skill.
Say that they're not on grade level. You know, I wouldn't say that that, it has a different meaning than I R E D. Do you know what I mean? So the A P M is like, where would they be if they tested on that day on an, on the F S A itself?
Oh, I understand. Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now we're getting ready to start our technology?
Well, he's switching on the run of the restroom. You don't have to take a break.
Oh, okay. Anyone, what's up? One-minute rush, we're not gonna.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson.
Thank you.
Very good. You can go ahead.
All right, uh, good afternoon, everybody. Appreciate this opportunity to kind of update you on the good things that are going on in Lake County schools in regards to technology. You know, it's kind of weird. Uh, our last five-year plan lasted exactly two and a half years before it kind of erupted into flames or something like that. Basically, though, uh, one of the things that I was very excited about is that we had that five-year plan because, boy, I tell you, in the almost unimaginable con, uh, circumstances that the pandemic created, it really was a situation where we leaned on that technology heavily. And if we would have not had that technology in place, I hate to say it. I I tell my friends all the time, like, if we would have been in a situation where the pandemic could have happened three years earlier or so, we might have been dragging copiers out. where the pandemic could have happened three years earlier or so, we might have been dragging copiers out into parking lots, running off packets, things of that nature. It's just a good thing that we had a definite booster rocket into the pandemic, if there's such a thing. However, I, one of the things is, is that as I was looking over the technology plan, and you know, it was kind of funny because like other departments, we're in kind of a recovery and rebuilding phase. We, and we'll talk about that in a second, made a lot of progress, but the progress was not according to script. And when you make that amount of progress quickly, then you are really having to catch up with yourself after it was done. Because a lot of things were done, like I said, in parking lots over the summer, which was an, to be honest with you, one of the most unorthodox distribution methods of Chromebooks I've ever seen. I'd never thought in a million years I'd be running a Chick-fil-A style drive-through to get Chromebooks out to people, but that did work, honestly. And so today, what I'm proud to present to you is the next five-year plan. Couple of things have happened since then, instructional technology and information technology are now unified. So it's all kind of sort of consolidated, we were together before, but we're really tight together now. And to the right of me is David Haas, he is the manager of instructional technology. And he is taking over that group and that team has been very, very talented. As you can see, and as it was pointed out, we make plans and these plans seem to be getting a little bit longer because we have a little bit more of a scope. And just for about maybe thirty seconds, I kind of want to acquaint you with the scope of our department. It is a wide scope, honestly. We are involved in FTE, student information, we process grades, we print report cards, we handle devices, we handle phones. You haven't lived until you've handled phones or copiers, to be honest with you, that's a lot of fun, fax machines, things of that nature. But also provide a whole lot of core applications that were necessary and important to springboard us into this last period. And like I said, I, my team is so gifted. And there's fifty-some people back down the street, and this is the culmination of their work, so I want to make sure that I bring that to you first. So as you can see, it is a thirty-three page document, in the interest of consolidating time a little bit, what we're gonna do is, is that in the very first page, what you're gonna see is, is that we talk about instructional technology. This document to me is kind of like a, I don't know how you'd say it, like kind of a heart and then the head. And the heart of everything we do is to support the teachers and students of Lake County schools. And that's one of the reasons why we put instructional technology at first, is that I think it's super important, even though we can get into the weeds as far as nerds go and talk about all kinds of technical stuff, the truth is, is that it's about instruction. And so to kind of sort of start that off and to sort of sum up these first pages, I want to kind of sort of turn it over to David to kind of explain some of the strides that we've made, even in the pandemic, because there is one thing that I would like to mention. In the original plan, one of the things that we took great care in is, is that I do not believe and won't ever believe that machines can teach students as well as a human being can. And our technology program was not designed for that at all. However, in the early days of the pandemic, there was almost no choice. I mean, if you remember, that was an eleven-day executed plan to be able to start instruction, and spring break was even sandwiched in there just for good measure or something like that, which, by the way, I'm still waiting to collect. But the thing is, is that with that said, with that said, we did go a little program heavy. But this plan starts the kind of, I don't wanna say the reconstruction, but kind of the reconfiguration, the looking at the human part of this. And so to speak to that, I'm gonna turn it over to David for just a second.
So the first few pages are really talking about how we as a team unite and work together. So we are working heavily with the IT side of things, because we're all together on this now, united, but we're also working with our curriculum specialist to really figure out how instruction follows the framework that's been set out, because to us, that is our guiding light. Even though we are tech people, we are teachers, like our group are teachers at heart, and so we have to speak the same language if we're talking about modeling, thinking, or collaboratively learning together. So we work with the curriculum specialist to kind of bridge the gap between that, and we've seen some amazing work, you'll actually see that in some of the pages coming up. We were gonna do a demo this morning, and for the sake of time, I'm gonna kind of walk you through that. Nothing's as exciting as it is usually in the classroom. So I'm gonna tell you about some things that we do with these tools. So we provide training on the Google Apps for Education, and our whole goal is to help further instruction. Like the superintendent said in the mid-year update, it's to really enhance the learning in the classroom. It's not supposed to be one more thing, it's not supposed to distract from the district framework. It's really a tool, for me, I always think about, if I'm telling somebody that we need to do something in terms of a goal, we need to provide the tools to get there. So from our perspective, now every single student in Lake County has one of the Chromebooks that they can use at home and at school. And that's huge when you think about times of collaboratively learning, because that's a hard thing to do sometimes. We always run out of materials, if it's a poster chart, post-its, even the markers for highlighting text for the authentic literacy piece of it. We are providing the tool to every single student, and it's exciting for us, because it doesn't matter what zip code in Lake County you're at, you have the same opportunity. And so really, the hard work for us is to help teachers learn kind of a new method. This whole COVID kind of disrupted our way of being, because now we have to think about some of the digital side. But I will tell you, everything I'm speaking about this morning is really for face-to-face classrooms. And it's it's a challenge, we have students that are sitting at their desks with plexiglass dividers, and some of our little guys or girls, they don't want to say, I can't see the board through this. I mean, if they have a Chromebook in front of them and their teacher is utilizing some of these tools, they can actually see it right in front of them. If teachers are feeling really comfortable, they could, teachers can allow students to actually interact with the content directly on the Chromebook in front of them. So you think about, what is it like in terms of interacting with the curriculum and engaging with the content? We've seen some fantastic teachers that are doing collaborative slides where the students are interacting together on the slideshow, even though that they're in the same physical classroom, we're now actually able to capture the evidence of students talking, thinking, writing, all that's inside the document. So one thing that we always talk about are like our Avid strategies, if we're collaborating on a poster assignment, what might that look like with the digital side? It could be a Google Slides where they're all collaborating on the same slide, they're typing at the same time, they're adding thinking onto another peers' thoughts, they can do a peer review. But one thing for us is, again, what's the purpose of all this? Some of it's the access, like, who keeps that piece of paper if we're writing on that piece of paper at the end of the day? Do I have to tear it up in two pieces, because each student wants to get a copy? So for us, if we start transitioning to these digital tools and everyone is using it, every single student that's collaborating on that digital tool can now have access to it anytime that they want. So for me, I really appreciate this, because we think in terms of authentic learning experiences. It's like, why am I doing a thinking map? Well, it's probably to help me prepare for the writing, what's the next phase? I'm transitioning to writing about what I just read about. And so we're really making that connection, and we're gonna say, we're gonna go back to that Google Slides of that thinking map, maybe it's a bubble map or circle map. We're gonna use that for the next piece. So I think in terms of education, we're actually trying to provide a lot of transparency as to why we're doing some learning activities. It's not just for learning or just for the the work, it's actually to help promote this literacy and try to have students be metacognitive about what's going on in the classroom. It's a lot of details, it's more fun when you actually see it in the classroom and get to see kids collaborate with each other. But that's really our goal, is to really help further the message of the district framework and providing tools and training to all of our staff members on this. We had a great opportunity for pre-planning where we actually did Google trainings, and it was kind of a base, it was a lot. This year has been all about change, but we felt it was a necessary step. If we're providing Chromebooks and we're providing a lot of this tools to offer, we at least need to provide that support. And so our team is small but mighty, and so we are very happy to work with curriculum specialists. Like, if you've looked at our grade three through five science scope and sequence, there are some great ready-to-use templates that have everything kind of coded, ready to go for the teacher to model their thinking, to have collaborative assignments, all using some of the Google tools. So when you think from a teacher's perspective, how can I use this? A lot of our curriculum specialists are starting that work and actually providing the tools with content that's specific to those areas. And so we're very happy to kind of work together and share that same mission.
So it looks like we're in church, that would be the choir singing at this point. And to be honest with you, like, I really do like, think it's so important, because at my root, at his root, at a lot of the people who have really guided the work and the structure, we're teachers. And that is something that we've been afforded to do here, which I think is different than most IT departments, is we're not coming from a strictly technical mind, we're coming about how it gets engineered into the classroom. I want to kind of sort of build a little bit for just a second when we're talking about his work. So very specifically, one of the things that was amazing is the pre-planning effort to get our teachers and our students onboarded was literally just insane. And so what I mean by that is, is that we, as you know, if you're familiar with the instructional or the educational game, there's these things called MIP points. Over thirty-two thousand MIP points were awarded over pre-planning. And so what that speaks to is the volume, if you think of it in a lot of ways, that's kind of like a man or a woman hour, to some extent, a staff hour. And so our ability to scale up and actually get that message out to people and to broadcast it, but not just be something where somebody was watching it, where they were actually participating, because they had work, they had concrete deliverables that they took back and they collaborated with and things of that nature to earn those points. I think that speaks a lot to not only our ability to provide quality training, but to scale it up should we have to. And I think that was eye-opening to us, we had always been a little allergic to the sit and get that you might get over like a Zoom or Google Meet or something like that, but it allowed us to be able to do that. And there, I think one of the things that I am proud of before I move, is that these are comments from real teachers, is that we got an overwhelming verdict on it that basically said that this was very, very useful training, and we see it being deployed everywhere. So I do kind of want to bring attention to that. Let's kind of skip through some of the pages, the reason why these pages exist is, is that as we make progress through, I I do want to kind of talk for a second about like what this document's intended for. This is the framework when we go on the instructional side, we do kind of wear two hats, because we do have to make the technology work. But this is our idea or our vision instructionally. And so as you can see, there's a lot of re-words in there, we tried to fit as many as we could, the recommit will be the first of many you see, to authentic literacy. This is, I want to make sure that I'm very clear, our technology program is a back-to-basics in some ways movement, meaning that it's about reading and writing and thinking and talking. It uses technology as the support, not as the instructor. And that is a very, very key distinction from other technology programs. When I see other districts languish a little bit in Canvas land, and what I mean by that is, is that it's the ability to push out massive amounts of content, but at the end of the day, the kid is just consuming content or kind of going through and posting something on a discussion board. That's an okay first step, but what we're looking for is really meaningful, authentic, let's get into the text, let's highlight the text, let's see what you know, let's map your thinking. And I think that's very, very important, and again, a recommitting. I think the slide that I would bring your attention to, which is something that we have as a philosophy here, is tech should not be the starting point, learning is. And if the technology ever starts to drive the instruction, then we have failed miserably, in my opinion. What do you want students to learn? Text becomes, tech becomes the conduit to the end. And so we are kind of a tool in that service, and I think that's sort of important to know. The other pages, just if you were to look through them, I think this just, the reason I want to highlight this for a second is, is that I just want to highlight, when the instructional framework was kind of formally adopted here in Lake County, and it's what we see on learning walks, we said very instantly, we do not want someone to go, at least our goal is for not someone to go on a learning walk and it be divorced from what the message that the instructional leadership is pushing. And so what you see is, you see the instructional framework here, and these are concrete steps people can use, using the technology, more specifically the Google Apps for Education, on if I want to do collaborative learning, where do I start? And we think this is very, very important. Again, there's almost like there's these mini, like, content or lessons for each of these checks. And so what that allows us to do, we go into training, it's great that we can train and teach you how to push the buttons, that's useful and needed to some extent. But it's really like, let's get to how we can actually see, how do I do guided instruction with this? How do we actually do this? So when that administrator, when that school leader goes in and does the learning walk, they see what we want them to see and what everybody wants them to see. I will say this, though, again, with the pandemic, we were on this path anyway, the pandemic made it trickier, because the challenge nobody was thinking is, what happens when the teacher's not in the room, or the room just basically spreads to all corners of, you know, the school zone? I I, that, I think, has been a little bit of a lift and a little bit disruptive. So we are looking for students to come back and then us reengage that model. But the good news is, is that because we had this at least in place, it was not, let's pick eight programs to teach eight subject areas and then just have it shove content at kids. So I would just bring that to your attention. I will sum it up on the instructional side with this, is that we do strongly believe that it's about the student experience. And we think, and we can demonstrate, when students have a Chromebook, they receive more teacher support. I can tell you, I've watched teachers in classrooms provide feedback right then and there, they're on their Chromebook, they're collaborating, they go, hey, have you thought about this? And then the kids go, no, I haven't, and then they go in, that is amazing stuff. We think the students are empowered. We think that there is also something that we'll talk about quite a bit, which is equity in technology, equity in resource. I think it's very, very important that we do not just have one school or ten schools that are one-to-one. I didn't plan on doing it in a year, two and a half, but with that said, so be it, like, we're here. And so I think it's great that we're empowering all those students. I think it's important that these students have a voice and they get that feedback in real time, but I think one of the main things is, is engagement. In technology, a lot of times it's been like, let's show them a video and they'll get hooked on the video. All right, that's great, that gets me hooked, but listen, a hook without a lesson isn't much, to be honest with you. And so we have worked on lessons that engage them the whole way through and map the thinking, and against that collaboration is very, very important. We think that their teachers can do other things too, like I said, and we could kind of go on and on and on about the instructional method. But what I'd like to do is, if you don't have any questions about that, I would kind of like to go ahead and skip to the instructional technology piece. I would just point, if you are interested in it, we actually have built out like, what does it look like in math? Math is a hard one, I'm not gonna lie, solving math and stuff like, ELA, it's like, the Google Docs kind of lend themselves to it. Getting into math has been difficult, but Laura Woodham, who's probably behind me, I think, yep, there she is. Laura Woodham has done an outstanding job working with curriculum and that program specialist to work on math and solving the math riddle in technology, because for a long time, it was like it had to be a program, like it does have to be Alex. Alex is a great support, make no bones about it, those things are great for intervention or kind of sort of as that support. But it's like, what does the day-to-day instruction look like? And we've started to solve that. So if you don't have any questions, what I'd like to do is kind of fast-forward a little bit to this and start talking about the instructional or the information technology side. There's one last thing that I would put in there, one thing that I'm proud of our district is that we did, and we fought a couple battles about this for a second, is that I think at the very, very beginning, we had a community that was somewhat concerned on Lake County's, on Lake County devices. One of the things that we installed is, is we installed at an early start in this, because we kind of did have the vision, we just didn't know the vision was going to be so forced, a program known as GoGuardian, y'all had passed it a little bit ago, and GoGuardian actually created a little bit of a wave here or there in the community, because it's a filtering piece of software and it's a monitoring piece of software. But I'm gonna tell you, that was, a lot of those waves were made pre-pandemic. And right now, that is the ability for teachers to actually be able to manage at least the digital environment when they're a Lake Live teacher, when those kids aren't in front of them, and it has been honestly a saving grace to some extent. So keeping our kids safe, whether it's more digital citizenship, which we do have kind of planned, or GoGuardian, which is something that's in place. I don't want to say I told people so, but like, that was one of those few times where we got the chance to say, I know some people were concerned about the privacy and stuff like that, but it is so important for us to keep our students safe and make sure that our kids are on task. And I think that has definitely been something that teachers have appreciated, so. So if they're, real quick, in the first chunk of this, for some, to some extent, are there any questions about the instructional method that we're taking in these endeavors?
Move ahead.
Good deal. The good news is there was no iReady data in there, so that was quick. So, I'd take again, anyway, too soon. All right, I guess the thing I was gonna say is, is that, as you can see on this page, what we did is, is we talked about reshaped. So all the plan, and the reason why we're bringing this five-year plan to you is, A, a couple of things. One is, is that in the new board policies that we rewrote last year, if you remember that, one of the things that we called for is, is that we called for the submission of a yearly technology plan. So the five-year plan will be kind of the basis, and we'll bring you one-year updates, and those are forward approvals, and that was on Niola's recommendation. Most of these dives won't be as deep, they'll just be kind of periodic updates, and we could probably even do that a little easier. But I will say this, is that we would be wrong to not say that the pandemic reshaped us and reshaped everything that we did in technology. And the good news is, we had quite a bit, but I think one of the number one things that makes me a little nervous as we're trying to plan the long-term strategic vision of the district is, is that Chromebooks are like milk. Now, you can load your refrigerator up with milk, like ten, twelve gallons of it, but unless you're a high consumer of milk, they're probably all gonna go bad at once. And Chromebooks, actually, even if they are consumed, all go bad at once. And one of the reasons why we had an original five-year plan was the logistic thought behind it, which is, it took a payment and it divided it into fifths. So as we were desperately trying to make sure that we negotiated in the first part of the pandemic, we bought twenty-some thousand Chromebooks all at once, or twenty-one thousand gallons of milk. And so there is a chance that they will all sort of simultaneously expire. We had to, like, it wasn't an option to some extent, but it does provide a challenge for us. And this is one of just many details that it reshaped. And we looked at the five-year plan, of course, once everything kind of sort of cooled down in late October, early November, and we're like, this thing doesn't apply. Like, it just doesn't apply, and we're not doing it anymore. This is not the year that I'm methodically working through middle schools to make them one-to-one, we already did it. Like, maybe not as methodically as we would have liked, but it happened, right? And so this is basically us recommitting it. But I do want to show a couple of things that I think are fascinating, just as far as how pervasive this technology is. So if you look at the graph, like, there's three hundred, I think in two thousand seventeen, eighteen, or something like that. But as you can see, we have over forty-two thousand number of Chromebooks that have been distributed, like, that is an insane amount. And actually, if you look at the year before, when we thought we were honestly killing it, that was only like eleven thousand or so. So two thousand, twenty, twenty-one was a crazy, crazy year, right? And so at forty-two thousand Chromebooks, we're effectively a one-to-one district. I think this means a lot of questions, I think, obviously, that's one of the reasons why the instructional piece is so important. Otherwise, it just becomes a forty-two thousand opportunities to over-screen time the student. It's one of the reasons why we're so insistent about the instructional model being the way that it is. But alongside that, I think one thing that's fascinating is, we had seen Google Classroom do okay. But alongside that, I think one thing that's fascinating is we had seen Google Classroom do okay. Like we would go into a one to one high school, the first one, or the first four really, that year we would go into. And we would get Google Classroom to take a pretty decent uptick. But like in other places, it wasn't really that widely adopted. We made a strategic decision to basically sort of focus all of our attention on Google Classroom. And right now, you have over 6,844 active classes on a daily basis if you were just taking a snapshot. And over 7,500 daily posts, which can include assignments, interactive assignments, questions, whatever. And that's a pretty crazy skyrocket, to be honest with you. And you were probably looking at close to like seven or 800 active classes previous to this. Like Live is obviously the number one cause of that to some extent. But as you can see, we basically adopted, and I know people will argue with me and I'll argue back with them, that Google Classroom is not an LMS. There'll be people that will try to sell you a high cost LMS all the time. I'll tell you, in my opinion, you spend more time training them on the LMS than you do on actually teaching. And that is a little bit of a misappropriation. Not that some LMSs aren't good for college level type stuff. But I guess the thing I'm saying is, is that to have it that widely adopted and y'all not to hear courses of like, what is this and I'm freaking out and it's not working? I will tell you that Google bent during the early days of the pandemic. It crashed a couple of times, which if Google's crashing, like you expect planes to fall out. I mean, that's like a scary world, right? Like to some extent, but they were able to correct. Class Link, which you all also approved, because I think it's important for us just to let you know that y'all's work directly supports us, 4.6 million logins this year. Like the thing is just smoking hot as far as like being used all the time. And 91% of all users, staff or students, log into it regularly. And so to be honest with you, that portal is where students find their textbooks. And again, widely adopted. I went to a principals meeting where I showed off Google Meet about a year and a half ago and everybody looked at me like, what on earth would I ever do with this? And it was kind of funny because it was pre pandemic and they're like, I don't know if I'll use this. And I'm like, yeah, but you could communicate with parents that couldn't make it there to like guidance appointments and things like that. And they're like, oh, that's cool. 8,500 or 8,855 students daily log in to receive their instruction. So at that particular point, we were lucky. I'm going to tell you, that's the story of us, is we were lucky by about a year. Like we started putting things in place that just if they wouldn't have been there, it would have been very, very difficult to get them in those 11 days. So.
What is LMS?
LMS?
I don't know, I'm scared I'm supposed to be in that.
Yeah, it's a learning management system. And so in the past, districts, like you may have heard School G, something like that, that would be a formal LMS. But they're usually per pay. Again, Google Classroom is free.
Like Canvas and Blackboard and.
Correct. And some of them have.
Like platforms that house your class.
Yeah. And some of them have purpose for sure, but they can be very complicated, hard to implement in 20 days or so. To reinforce, I will talk about this for a second. So as we were doing this, one of the things that we had to catch up with is we had built a great homegrown inventory system. But that started to buckle a little bit whenever we started slinging Chromebooks in parking lots. And so part of what we've done is we've migrated, you probably remember, again, your work supports ours. We bought Destiny Resource Manager, we're in the middle of implementing to that. If you're familiar with Destiny, that's how we check out textbooks. That's pretty soon how we're going to do that. And again, this is part of us reconstructing whatever happened. And so it'll be important for us, the good news is there's a learning curve, but the learning curve is very similar for a media specialist or people who administer textbooks. And so we feel pretty good about that. But I will talk about this for a second. So one of the things that we've got a reckoning on, and we have an idea because we can look in the management console and see. You might remember, we brought an amnesty, actually. There was a notification that went out early. It was like, hey, if you got a Chromebook, can you bring it back? Even if it's broke, we'll fix it. And we got a sizable, we got about, I think it was ended up being like, what, 400 or 500 Chromebooks back that way? So good chunk of our property. However, with the mobility of everything and stuff like that, we still have a small pile of, and to be honest with you, it's not as bad as I thought it would be. Right now, like I have about, probably about 700 to 800 Chromebooks that have not signed on in the last bit. Keeping in mind though, that we just put in, and I'll show you this in a second. We just put in a new process. There were a lot of schools sitting on broken Chromebooks for a little bit. And we just flushed those out about a week ago. And so we've gotten close to five or maybe even 600 by the time this is over back to the depot. So one thing that was remarkable is, is that if you think about the universe of Chromebooks, 42,000, you can lose a small percentage and lose a sizable chunk of money. But the parents and the stakeholders have been pretty good about reporting them, turning them in and things of that nature. I felt like there was just the spirit of good feelings that may evaporate at some point or may have. But necessarily during the pandemic, the early days of pandemic and the fact that it was like, people were trying to get a device and when they got a device, they transferred, they tried to get it back. But there's still some reconciling to do and we'll be doing that shortly. I think one thing that's important is, is that we're going to message with the schools that they're going to finally declare their missing Chromebooks at this particular point. And this is part of that inventory cleanup. We have a whole project that's going on with Destiny that we could go on and on about. I think one of the things that we will need to do at some point is, I talked to Elizabeth about this, is that at some point, we probably will need to send letters home. If you got our Chromebook, still want it back, that's just us, right? Like to some extent, if you're not in Lake County schools. Fascinating, found one in Puerto Rico a couple of weeks ago. I was like, I'm pretty sure you're out of our zone, maybe out of our state. And so we kind of requested that that device get sent back. They were like, can you pick it up? I'm like, can I? Maybe, like, I don't know. Yeah, exactly right, round trip. So anyway, long story short, there will be a point where we go in there. However, there is something that I want to point the attention to. I know in the past, we've tried to be accommodating to parents. And some of the stingers in this program are one sentences, but they, they do have a little bit of weight. Is that I know people want to bring their own device. And you know, we had a BYD program. And the reason why our infrastructure did not buckle or crumble, to be honest with you, is we said, we're going to just allow district devices or at first Chromebooks really, because Chromebooks behave a certain way. And this way, we don't have your Chromebook and your phone and your Nintendo Switch or whatever else that you can fit onto our network or whatever. And that preserved the resources for instruction. However, because GoGuardian, and I know we've let parents, but a couple of things that we've done, if you remember in the original plan, we had a $32 fee. But we don't have that fee anymore. It's more, it's, it's an instructional material or resource for all practical purposes. So that fee no longer exists, right? And I think it is very, very important for us, probably for the, maybe the next school year, the 21, 22, one of the things that we're proposing is only using Lake County school Chromebooks. And the reason is GoGuardian. It's an equity issue, to be honest with you. If I can afford a Chromebook, then I can afford out of being managed. And that's not fair to the students that can't. And so, and we want to manage, to be honest with you. And so I know at some point, the parents have had some feedback and some conversation. I think that conversation was completely appropriate in the beginning of this project. But as we evolved, for us to do some of the neat things that we really need to do and some of the management things, we really needed to be a Lake County Chromebook. We would not really let particularly a parent like adopt their own textbook and bring it in or something of that nature, just because, and this is sort of a similar, similar thing. So we are proposing that.
I think part of the problem with that prior issue was that the board had put out a list of devices that we recommend you go purchase in order to bring it into school. And the following year, we're like, oh, by the way, scrap that, don't do that anymore.
Right.
And I think probably enough time has passed now where those folks were either graduated or moved on. And you know, now we've got this Chromebook piece in place and it's well managed that I think, I think we probably won't find as many of those issues as we did before.
Yeah, I think it's.
And then everybody's getting one also with tech, techy waves.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, everything, the whole, that goes back to that reshape piece. Yep. So the rework piece, so if I go to that page for just a second, I'm going to talk a little bit about some things that I want to kind of slay. And one of them is going to be a little interesting to see. One of them is, is that to be honest with you, like there's been this eternal question of what we can do with student data in an email for like ever. And like, that's just been one of those questions that has gone on and on and on ever since I've been in IT, ever since I've been a teacher and there was an email account. Like because we now have cloud storage, because we have all that stuff, I kind of mean to convene a task force to kind of get, get, get that issue and get some, some harder ideas on it. Simply because right now, we have multiple interpretations. It's interesting because when we had conversations with the Niola folks during the policy review, I think that would be a logical time, right? Like even they were kind of like, eh, like at some point, we've got, we owe it to our teachers and our staff to give kind of hard and fast rules. Right now, they're basically not using it, but I think it, I think we need to look and see what that looks like. And so again, we're not making a decision on that today. But a lot of this information, I think the thing that we saw is it always existed at kind of a lower level. But we really need to identify ESE information, HIPAA information, which by the way, HIPAA information got real this year, right? Like because then all of a sudden, the quarantines and all that type of stuff, it's always existed, but now it existed in volume to some extent. And so we are looking to kind of do that. And I would not be doing my job if I wasn't constantly evaluating applications to make sure that we have the best things for our, our, our students and our teachers. And so one of the things is, is that, one of the things that's important, by the way, it's also kind of the law, is that we've started implementing 911 pinpoint services. Right now, if you call 911, it's kind of like they go to your school. But the school can be a big campus and honestly, somebody has to direct them there. And in a 911 emergency, you don't necessarily know. We're in the process of just, basically it's almost finished up. We just have a few more areas to define where it now pinpoints right to the room. So first responders will know exactly where to go. Seems like a small thing. Like I said, it's also the law. Yeah, but it is a big deal and we talk about the safety of our students. I think one of the other things too is that we evaluate every application. And so this is probably one of the more telling graphs that we have created. And I'll just kind of let you know, we have the five years there and you'll see this blue cloud. And so we have this old machine called the NAS400. Looks like a refrigerator, basically. The screen looks like an Atari 2600 and it's black and green. And this is where terms lives. It still kind of lives, to be honest with you. If you remember a little bit ago, I took it to the board. We've now pushed that into the cloud because the maintenance for that machine is unbelievably expensive. We were probably going to have to get a new one, which would have been like a hundred grand or 150 grand. And you got to pay a yearly maintenance for it. Finance, HR, they still use it to pull things off. Every once in a while, we'll get a transcript or we have to pull it from it. And of course, that's a lot of, it's like 20 some years of district data. We didn't want to just get rid of it. And so we've moved it to a cloud services type thing. Because part of our efficiency is what can we take out of our data center and move to cloud? If it's more cost effective. And so with that in, on 2021, 22, let me just have a real frank conversation about this. So Skyward is going to go through a major upgrade. Now, you're asking me when and how and why? Like we kind of know how, which scares us a little bit. We're talking about a data grace, database upgrade. We're talking about all the screens changing. We're talking about a rewrite of the program effectively. This rewrite has been going on for like six or seven years. They had a conference in St. Pete last year. And in that, they're like, hey, this thing's coming. And we're like, when? So we can plan. And they're like, well, we can't tell you that yet. Tell you what the barrier is? The barrier is state reporting in Florida. It's complicated, to be honest with you. And so they haven't quite done it, but we've started to see some tools. When we do this, we're going to be going through what is basically a conversion for all. Like if you've got to update the data, I mean, I just hate to say this. If you've got to upgrade the database, if you've got to change the screens and I had to bring people in to retrain them, you're looking at a conversion. And so part of what we want to do is, is that I want to have a very frank conversation with Skyward about this because I need to know it for planning purposes. As you might have remembered from the last one, conversions, like for the record, like I am not the champion of a conversion. I have done like 11 of them in my life. If I never did another one again, I would be a happy person because I work for a vendor. I'm, I'm good. Like I don't need, I don't need to collect that badge anymore. However, if we're going to go through one, I need to know the timing. And to be honest with you, I've not gotten actually that answer from Skyward at this particular point.
And is it worth visiting whether Skyward is the best offer for us?
So as much as I think that, I think we owe that due diligence to the district, right? Like if I'm going to go through all this trouble, then is that where I land? And so I think the alternative is for Skyward to pop. I don't think they would give us like two weeks or three weeks or anything like that, but they might give you a year or two to move over. They say they'll give you longer, but to be honest with you, that's not the reputation I've seen.
You mean if you, if you pick someone else?
Well, I think what they would do is they would, they say they would give you two years notice that they were going to change the system and then you would have time to do it. But no, they won't give us, I mean, I think if we change the system, we need to be looking now is, I think, an answer directly to your question.
Hundred percent.
And so part of what we're doing in the 2021, 22 school year is we're exploring. I want to be very clear, exploring is not committing to go. Like we are literally going to the mall and just looking around for a second in case we have to. And we may just walk out of the mall, like who knows? But anyway, again, as part of our responsibility, we have to be looking at the horizon of it because we don't want to do one of those fast. Network storage, the K drive, which makes me sometimes twitch a little bit to some extent, or the U drive or whatever. I think we have an opportunity to do that in the cloud, to be honest with you, where we have infinite amounts of space. However, we need that first part, that task force to let us know what we can store in the cloud. One thing kind of builds the other. We may go to Gmail for students only at some particular point in that year. The other things are a little more in the weeds. I will say this is that the one thing I won't touch is Skyward business, like the thing that pays us. Like there's no need to, period. Like they don't have a planned upgrade for that. Like I don't have any intention of touching anything that is there. We would look to see if it's going to be in the cloud. If it could be in the cloud and it could be cheaper for us than having a bunch of servers that power it, we'll go for it. It's all about the efficiency piece and the cost reduction. Active Directory could be a little bit more, maybe more of a hybrid model to some extent, where we push it in the cloud. And part of my other reason is, is that if something happens to our data center, which if you've seen our data center, it's not the fanciest building, I'm not going to lie. And so these applications. Exactly, right? Like so, so my argument is, is that there are places like Amazon Web Services that are industry level standards that basically guarantee uptime all the time and that school districts have leveraged to some extent. So again, this is just part of us doing that. And so, and then we'll look at Performance Matters. If you see the finger with the checkbox, that's just us evaluating it. It's not that this is an indication to change. It's just, does it make sense to go to people, say, is this satisfying the need? If yes, continue. If no, then go look for something else. All right. All of that ties into this for a second, which is the instructional digital ecosystem. It kind of morphed a little bit this year, but basically what this is, is that for instruction, these are our tools. And so you can see content. We did away with Safari Montage. It was an interesting system. I don't think I've ever end of lifetime and only had four emails or five emails. Most people were okay with the change, especially when we pointed them to pbs.org, which provides small little snippets and a whole bunch of content. The thing I liked about pbs.org a little bit better is, is that instead of showing you a 30 minute video, it was a three minute video, which seems more appropriate, not to chew up class time or have the teacher have to search through it. Communication, as you can see, we've made great strides since Superintendent, the Superintendent Carnegie has been here. Facebook is obviously how we literally communicated to every parent during the pandemic. Again, you want to talk about a just in time type thing? And it is funny to think that when we started the first plan, we were blocking it like from internal use to some extent. And so you talk about that amount of progress to some extent. Final site we brought up to make sure our website was ADA compliant. We may look at Gmail accounts for teachers and students. That's kind of complicated to some extent, but really, I'm not going to give them a different one. I'm just going to forward their email so they get classroom notifications better. We are doing an Instagram pilot, where you kind of go where the people lead you, right? And if the people are on Instagram, you kind of take a look at it and see, right? And really, it's, the thing is, is that the integration between Facebook is really easy because they own each other. Assessment, as you can see, Performance Matters and iReady. I guess I said it wasn't in here, there it is.[1604.22] But, and then the devices, we've almost gone for students, literally exclusively to the Chromebook. We still have iPads for ESE concerns. We have big screen Chromebooks, things of that nature, Windows laptops and desktops. And then, of course, we're evaluating Skyward for the student information system.
Mr. Weeks?
Yes.
Can I ask about, you, you mentioned email a couple of times. The kids themselves on the Chromebooks, the email, at least I don't think my daughter's email doesn't work. So that's, that's everyone's, right? Like, kids' emails don't work?
So kids' emails do work. They do not get, the one trick with emails has always been, how do you deal with external? Has anybody who's had an email account, how do you deal with external email accounts? So they have the ability, and then if they don't, let me take a look at it and see. But they should have the ability to email their teachers. But it just goes back and forth to the teachers at this particular point. I think that needs a little bit of a look. However, the external part, as you can imagine, it's so easy for people to get in. And then all of a sudden, you've got stuff circulating around and it looks like county schools endorsing it. But it, but it is designed for that internal teacher to student. I think most teachers and students have found other ways to communicate at this particular point. But, but, but I would, I would say that the email account is for that.
Okay, so, so they can only, they can only do internal? They can't, like, like, we were trying to print something and the printer wasn't working, blah, blah, blah.
Sure.
Um, and so we were like, okay, I'll email it to me. And I couldn't. So like, I can't email my kids' work to me, right?
Right. I think the best way or the best method in that particular case is to log in with the student account on the device that has the printer. And then you can print directly from there. And that, that will definitely work.
Okay.
So, so in keeping with our string of rewords, here's refresh. So, and basically, this is where I've got a little bit to kind of talk about. So one of the things that I'm happy to announce is that last year, pre-pandemic, we decided we were going to refresh the elementary schools' staff laptops. If you had ever been in a room, it was, you know, listen, 10 minutes for a device to start up is 10 minutes of potentially wasted instructional time. It doesn't sound like a thing, but it's a thing. Part of the reason we picked the Chromebook is, is that it starts right up. Well, the staff's device needed to be faster, too. In the middle of the pandemic, right around October, when we were bored, we decided to refresh the middle school. And right now, the next week and a half or so, the high school ones are coming. And so what we will have done is, is that over a period of a calendar year, we will have refreshed the staff devices across the district. And so I think that's super important. You know, it's kind of funny, a lot of people are always like, and I mean, I can kind of come to this mindset, is let's get the device to the kids. But what we saw is, is that in Google Meet or things of that nature, if your device was underpowered, then you were probably skipping frames or things of that nature. It just wasn't a good idea. And so we moved to do that as fast as we could, and we feel pretty good about that. The student Chromebook refresh, it's hard to believe. On my Facebook timeline, like, this is going to sound wild and you're like, what on earth? You just told us we went one to one and now you're talking about a refresh? That's kind of the eternal war. And listen, one of the things is that, like, this program, so I, I would say two things. Even teachers that might have said, I don't know if I want this thing in my classroom, try taking it away from them, to be honest with you. I think they see their value instructionally. I think it's just hard. And I think it's best for kids, too. But on the other end of it, too, like, I've never seen a district go back from one to one. Like, I've just never seen it. And part of the thing that I believe Mr. Dodd had brought up in the early parts of this project is, is how is this project going to be sustainable? Like, it's not enough just to get over the, like, over the finish line and say you're one to one. Because as soon as you do that, you've got some devices. When I was looking at my Facebook feed, the first Chromebook that we had in Lake County that was white gloved, ready to go, the kind that come out of the box and just go, it's three years old. Yeah, like, it's been weird, weird time does fly, right? And so by it being three years old, as we talked about it, if you think about it, and of course, these devices have gone home. It, it's an interesting battle worn device, a one that goes home all the time with a middle school kid. Any kid, to be honest with you. But normal wear and tear takes place. And as we kind of kid, they're great devices. They've served a huge purpose. But at the end of the day, they're kind of Fisher Price laptops, right? As we look at it, they, they, they aren't made to last 15 years. This is not your MacBook Pro. And thank goodness, because the screens are so cheap, we fix them for 30 bucks a pop now at this particular point. But it is time to start talking about the Chromebook refresh, which I'll talk about in a second. What I did is that in our approach there, is we took the five-year capital plan that you all provide us. And I said, how are we going to make this work? And when are we going to start the refresh? And let's not get behind the curve. Because even though we might have a little bit of an uneven refresh, to be honest with you, that's the charge of the pandemic. That's the charge of us having to buy 20,000 at once. Is we want to go back to a staggered format on that. And so I think that's kind of important. Copier refresh, I was thrilled. Like, it was probably one of my life goals to do a copier project in my life, so no one ever, to be honest with you. And I know you all have gotten a lot of complaints about the copier project we did in December, right?
Let's talk about all of them.
Well, in December? Like, did you get any complaints, just out of curiosity? I'll open the floor. Nope. That's because we literally replaced every copier in the district in December. And the fact that you did not get any complaint is the only metric I need to make sure that it necessarily works. It was funny, I got an interesting complaint from a school. They're like, these copiers cost more. And I'm like, it's because your old ones are broken now as you're using them. Like, it's actually cheaper per sheet, the lease is cheaper per month. We went through and negotiated that. But the good news is, that was just something we had to do. The infrastructure refresh, I have, if it goes through, I have a pretty decent sized infrastructure refresh. Because one thing that worries me is our infrastructure has held. That's another news story that hasn't happened, right? That, like, we came back, we're one to one and the infrastructure crashed, but all our kids aren't back. And so that does have me worried a little bit, which is when they all come back, whatever that appointed hour is, then we need to make sure our infrastructure can hold. Right now, it's holding fine, but we're not at full, we're not at full capacity as far as full, full students. And then finally, these, the, the displays. And one of the things that I do hate that we kind of had to cut out today is the display refresh. So if we go to the timeline, we know these projectors are aging out. I'll talk about them very specifically in a second. But what I've gone ahead and done in this five-year plan, even stretched a little bit past it, is, is that I want to build into the plan that we're going to go ahead. And even though we refreshed elementary staff devices like last year, well, time will tick on. And that was the 20, like, the, the 19, 20 school year. That actually kind of happened in 19. So really, like, in, like, five years, I want to refresh those devices. Like, I don't want to get in a situation to where I can provide you all a stable bill. And same with the middle and same with the high. High schools. For the Chromebook refresh, what I would like to do is, is that I think we would be safe seeing break rates, seeing how these things have worn in the field, just seeing it. I think we're looking at about a four-year refresh cycle in order to keep the fleet fresh. Like, I think that's a fair appraisal of it. And so in the end of this year, what I'm proposing is, is that as devices come back, that we would start the refresh for, really, it's, even though we're doing it maybe in that fiscal year of 21, 22, because I was concerned with budget things, that when the kids come back, that those devices are refreshed. And that will put us right about where I feel like we need to be. And then, of course, the middle school. And then the elementary school, we would divide into halves. And again, this is the goal of trying to bring it back to being staggered. And as devices come in, not every device will expire or prove, you know, it's not like it's going to turn into a pumpkin at midnight or anything like that. Some of those devices that come back can be used for extras, so we can keep the fleet. It's just a sustainability maneuver.
When, when do you tie numbers to this overview?
I'm sorry? So.
When do we see what this is all going to cost?
Yeah, I wasn't going to show you that today. So, but I thought you might ask the question. So one of the things is, is that, so in the capital funding, in the capital funding, what you can see here on the screen, and I can provide it for y'all, I figured this is.
Okay, I just wanted.
Oh, it is here.
Mine's asleep, it says no signal.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I have your packet in front of me, but you're looking maybe.
Yeah, so I apologize about that. I can make these available to you as a separate, but I guess where, yeah, I hate that it's not. But I guess what I was going to say is, is that for five years, what I did is took the capital plan and actually broke a line item for what the Chromebook refresh would cost, based on current enrollment numbers with a little bit of squish for enrollment growth. So it does kind of exist, so maybe they can.
Could you tell us the numbers?
Uh, I've got the numbers shared on the screen.
I can't read it.
Why do our screens stink?
Yeah, I'm not sure what.
Oh, now I can read it, okay.
So what I did is.
You've got a couple of bumps where it goes to 8.7 million?
And we're not going to talk about that. So actually, yeah, so that's the next. All these details. Yeah, so that's the next part of it, right? So, so that's actually not, most of that bulk, honestly, is, is that for the 2021 school year, I think what my, I think where I was trying to thread it is, is that, and I've got, this is a model that I wasn't really going to show you all today, because I still have some conversations with Scott about what side of the fiscal year the high school refresh would fall on. I know that when the devices come back, from a project management standpoint, it's best to get the devices back, do what we're going to do with them, get the high school new devices and then have them go out. On, on the fiscal year, I kind of have gone back and forth whether or not the, that charge belongs in the 2021 school year or the 21, 22 school year, from a, from a fiscal standpoint.
Yeah, I don't want to get into weeds about it and we're having a little technology. But why don't we just skip the numbers then, since you're, since they're not solid anyway?
Sounds good.
Just know that it's a concern and 8.7 million dollars is a real concern.
Yes, it's money. Now, keeping in mind, though, the one thing that I would bring up here for a second, when you talk about the 8.7 million dollars, when I look at the capital plan, so part of the idea was, is that when I met with Kelly Randolph, who provided me information on the capital plan, part of what I was attempting to do is take the constraints of the, and of course, this plan could change, right? Like, things could evolve. But it's what I had in front of me. And so basically what I did is, is that every year I carry forward or whatever happens with remaining funds. So I guess to me, part of in my budgetary design, it wasn't to tap out every dollar necessarily. And I'm not saying 8 million dollars isn't a lot of money. I just took the frame of what Kelly provided us as far as technology refresh and technology infrastructure. And so, so I just took that information and then built a plan around it, so. But again, those will be up for.
And these are all pre-E rate, right? Like, E rate helps us, like, pay pennies on the dollar, right?
So that's a good question.
A certain amount?
Yeah, so just to reiterate that question for everybody, the E rate piece does not apply to, does not apply to devices. It does not apply to devices, unfortunately. However, it does apply to infrastructure. We get about 80 cents on the dollar back. So for example, one of the things that we've ambitiously, and I'm going to tell you, it's worn a year off my life, to be honest with you, is, is that in the past, when Lake Minneola was constructed, we did not actually fund it with E rate. We went with the builder. And because you go with the builder and you've pre-selected a vendor, it disqualifies you from E rate. We're trying for the, like I said, it may wear a year off our life. We're trying for the brass ring to be able to, and we'll know in the next little bit, to E rate the equipment, which will end up, out of that construction budget saving for everything we would have spent on infrastructure or connection, we'll be paying 20 cents on the dollar. And so, but I'm telling you, it's a hard process. Because from a project management standpoint, the company, or let me clarify, is that the government agency that does E rate, I only have till January to apply. And then I have to wait 28 days. And then I have to unseal the bid and get a contract to y'all. So I'll get that contract to y'all in March. But that's a kind of a tight flossing to some extent. But if we get it, then we, yeah, I mean, it is. As long as that school opens, all right. Well, that school will open, whether I have to go to Target and buy wireless access points. Like, I don't even care. That school will open on time. But regardless, that's it. The big boost, though, is, is that one of the things that we feel very, very passionately about is the main classroom display situation in Lake County is easily the biggest gap that we have. Like, we have old projectors that either consume us in bulbs. You could probably bake a pizza if you put next, put one next to it, because they generate a bunch of heat. The lights have to be off most of the time to see it, which instructionally is a terrible thing, right? It's like, hey, kids, we're going to learn, let's turn the lights off. And that's not exactly the most conducive instructive environment. And so one of the things that we've built that we're very, very proud of is a replacement for the projector. And so our goal is, and this thing is highly interactive. It's not quite a touchscreen, we did that on purpose. We felt like a touchscreen meant that the teacher was standing in front of the class, touching it all the time, which is really just a presentation piece. Students need to be interacting. So it has a Chrome box on the back, the students interact with the display via their Chromebook. It's an ingenious thing. There's a wireless document camera, game changer to some extent. Because in the past, I had to be basically stationed up front. Now I can go in and I can model student work out in the, like, field, out in the classroom, basically. And I can go around and like, like, I don't have to be tied to the front of the class. And so part of what I use that capital refresh funding for is those main classroom displays and an attempt to refresh them. The good news is, is TVs don't go out the same way that projectors do. So in the long term, this will be a good investment. And this thing is, this project is built super modular. And the fact that if a piece breaks, then I can just replace the piece. So I think we're pretty happy about that. Copier refresh.
It won't be mounted on the whiteboards in front of them.
It will not be mounted on the whiteboards. In fact, it's mobile. And let me tell you one of the reasons why that is. It comes on a balance box, much like that. The reason why that's so important is, is that teachers have different configurations. Like, maybe doing small group and they want to bring it over here, it makes sense. So they can really actually go in. We would be happy to give any of y'all a demonstration on it.
It's just like that, right?
It is like that. I think the power is in the Chrome box. We have science sensors, accelerometers that interact with it, that you can have labs out on tables and then it's broadcasting. There are some very cool things that could be.
I want to teach here.
8 million dollars.
Yeah. I'm trying to sell it, I'm trying. So, yeah.
I have a question.
Of course.
On the main classroom displays, could you share with us your thinking behind doing the elementaries before the middle? You've got high elementary.
Yeah, so, yeah, so a, a little bit there. Like, so I know right now in the high schools, we'd actually started down this path previous to the pandemic. So just to talk about the high schools first. And part of our idea was that, when this was a traveling roadshow where we made you a one-to-one school, the one, the Chromebook, every student having a Chromebook, working with those displays, from a project standpoint, just worked. It's like now, this is the capstone of that, and then we're going to move on. I think in the rearranging, we're open to any thought on it, is, is that we kind of feel bad. Like, the elementary schools were originally the last to get, the elementaries were the last to get Chromebooks. It felt like every time we were doing a project, when we did the staff project, the staff refresh project, elementaries were first. High schools were last. High schools were first to get Chromebooks. So it's a very, just attempt to kind of sort of spread the wealth a little bit and not just pick one, one area.
Ancient projectors at elementary schools as well?
Yeah, I will say that the projectors of the elementary schools are definitely a challenge, as Ms. Luke had identified. There are a lot of them that are, are just kind of like, with the smartboard configuration and stuff like that, just aren't, aren't working as well, so. All right. So in replenish, there's a whole bunch of stuff here, but I will tell you this, is that I'll skip a couple of pages just so we can bring this home. We reordered the way the repair piece works completely. So in the past, we would send the tech out, and that was inefficient. Like, techs are driving around. To be honest with you, we were waiting on schools to have parts. And with that said, what we did is, is that in the mascot area, we took one of our rooms and we built a depot. We leveraged Jackrabbit, because Jackrabbit's making the routes anyway. It's now when a Chromebook breaks, basically what happens is somebody puts in a work order. And much like an Amazon Pick Center or something like that, what happens is, is that we get the work order and then we pick a Chromebook that's fixed and we send it in Jackrabbit that day. And then the, the broken Chromebook returns to us, because again, Jackrabbit's already making those routes. It will save us driving, it's more efficient that way. It allowed us to centralize the part process, because we had 42 schools trying to buy parts, trying to get these things fixed. And it just wasn't working, to be honest with you. So it's a highly centralized piece. We then just go back and build the schools for what, what happened. The schools collect the fees from the parents, and then we'll reconcile that, because we know we're not going to collect every fee. Like, that's a given, right? Like, to some extent. And when I say a fee, I mean, like, you broke a screen. That's the other thing we did is, there are different models and all these different price lists and stuff like that. We said, no, it's going to be this price for a screen, this price for a charger. We flattened it, we simplified it. We'll use some of that CARES Act funding to kind of sort of pay for some of this, I believe. We'll work on making sure that's added to the budget. But I just want to say that we tried to simplify that considerably and take that lift off of schools. And then here for the displays, because as we were thinking about it, I just would bring it up for a second. There's a whole lot of conversations about displays, but this is the power of the displays being mobile. I will say, when we're building the new school, the goal of the new school is to have the same technology as every school. Like, it's not equitable if you put a bunch of brand new technology in the new school. And to be honest with you, where to standard at this particular point? There will be one slight change that we hope to roll out to other schools at some point. Is, as you can see, this classroom is set up to where kids are in groups and there's a main display right here. And there's also these optional mini-displays, which act as like just miniature little stations. So if you had centers and like, let's say you had one of those center, sensors, you could have a center, pull these kids into center, and hey, you're going to do an experiment. And you're going to do it, instead of everybody hunched over one Chromebook, it's for the group to be able to see. They're relatively low cost. We are going to try that concept at the new schools. I think Andrea, the new principal, is very excited about it. And so we'll see if that rolls forward. And then the last part that I want to talk about, which I think we have more news to come, which is the reach piece. So we know easily, probably one of the biggest gaps right now is in connectivity at home. And what was funny is, is somebody was kidding me a couple of days ago and they're like, you haven't solved it yet? I'm like, oh, yeah, that's cool. It took 20 years to get here and now we're going to solve it in like six months during a pandemic. But it is a real issue. And to be honest with you, it's one that's kind of near and dear to my heart. And I'm going to tell you, hotspots right now, from a cost-effective standpoint, they're tough. They're $45 a month. So I can tell you during the great Chromebook rush of 2020, like, we could not have as many of them. And I can guarantee you, if we put out a flyer today that said, we've got hotspots, we would run out in 15 minutes, whether, we just would. Like, I just feel like that's actually the case. 1,000 hotspots at $45 a month, comes out to $45,000 a month. It doesn't take long for you to spend half a million dollars and you've only really addressed the issue in one out of 42 students. So I mean, it's an endless sea, right? Like, to some extent. So I think what we have to do is, we have to take the approach of perfect, yeah, you're not going to get there. Better, yeah, you can definitely get there. And so we're going to rebrand this, because honestly, the name needs some work. And so we're going to rebrand this because honestly, the name needs some work. We call them lake spots at first and it sounds like something you might get after crawling out of a lake. But with that said, the idea is, is that it's all about the partnerships. And so here's what I know, is that I know that there are massive infrastructures that are built out there. Like right now, like I know they exist. Like you can go to a municipality, you can go to a business, you can go all over the place. Now, these are not ideal places, I, I know that to some extent. But it's better than nothing. And I will tell you this, is that one of the things that we have found that is a barrier for students is, is that even though they know how to get the device, they, when they go to their, a lot of times, especially if they're in school, which is where we'll be probably in about a year and a half or so, like they know they just opened their Chromebook on and it connects to our network. Like we worked that magic a long time ago. But for them to get on somebody else's wifi means they have to go up to somebody, ask the password. It has to be set to a certain standard. And if you've ever hooked a wifi, it can be complicated sometimes depending on how they're configuring. And so part of our thought on it is, is that if there are these massive infrastructures out there, we can just call these people together and go, could you possibly make these changes to your infrastructure? Can we borrow your infrastructure for the students of Lake County Schools? And give you these configurations to where our Chromebooks automatically jump on it? Then there might be some value in that. Even more so if they're service providers. We get lucky enough to hook an Xfinity, because I can tell you, like some of these companies can do it. Like their employees will do it or other people will do it where their device just automatically connects anywhere they go. If there's a, that service being provided. And if we can just land one or two of those, then we could start to fill the map in. And so that is going to be kind of our passion project as we sort of move forward, is expanding that access. And I think that's important. Obviously, we're going to have to expand our own access within the walls. I'd like to get it out to the fields. To be honest with you, graduation streaming wise went off very well. It had no business going off very well, if you would have seen it minutes before. Matilla, I'm looking at you, like it was literally like, hey, there's this mobile hotspot. It was holds because like it was just, there's, some of those areas are tough. And so we are looking to do that. That will probably come sooner than later, but that's, that's kind of complicated.
This is kind of probably to the conversation with the partners. So if we're having that location where the students can come from a certain time period and there's the wifi is there and they can help them hook up and get on that too, that's.
I think the, I think the key will be, we have maybe cracked the code and even tested it with one business to where if we give them a configuration.
They'll do it.
It'll just jump on. Like and they'll never, they won't be ever.
Trying to work it out.